And we all know, because the voters know and have told us that we need to work to make Colorado more affordable. Together, we can create more housing for Coloradans at all income levels and increase access to convenient and low-cost transit opportunities, improve our quality of life, make the future of our state brighter and our state more livable. A better environment, cleaner air and water, a strong economy, and better transportation. The real-life situations that families face on rent or mortgage need no introduction or explanation to any of us because they loom large within our own personal friends and family network of Coloradans that are struggling to make their rent or mortgage every month. It's truly a matter of statewide concern. Simply put, we must create more housing in our state that Coloradans at all income levels can rent or buy in the communities where people want to live near job opportunities that pay well. And by reducing housing costs, we will also help decrease homelessness in our communities. And I want to thank the mayors who are on the front lines of this issue and have joined us here today. Denver Mayor Mike Johnson, Aurora Mayor Mike Coffin, Colorado Springs Mayor Yemi Mobalati, and Fort Collins Mayor Jenny Aron. Let's welcome them.
It is the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, City Council, 21st, 2025, City Council Meeting, City of Louisville. Can we get a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Okay, would you stand as able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're getting started just a few minutes late tonight. I guess you had a health emergency. We cleared the chambers for, but we hope that Gal is going to be okay. Appreciated our first responders first responding. Can I get a motion for approval of the agenda tonight?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. If you are interested in speaking on an item that is not on our agenda tonight or that is on our consent agenda, please fill out a card right outside the council chambers and give it to the clerk. When she calls your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and whether you're a Louisville resident. You're limited to three minutes, but you can talk about whatever you would like. If you're pooling time with somebody else who is available to, in tonight's meeting or online, let us know that and we can give you up to that amount of time. You don't have to speak for the full amount of time. All opinions are welcome. We have a pretty full agenda tonight and it looks like a full house here. To ensure that everybody feels welcome, to share comments, please refrain from clapping or booing or cheering or throwing things. That'll make it a little easier for people who maybe aren't so accustomed to public speaking to get up and do what they're entitled to do, which is share their views with us. We want the widest participation possible. So, do we have any people who would like to make public comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Louis Delaware.
Hi there. I'm Louis Delaware. I live here in Louisville. And my...
Okay. I'm Louis Delaware. I live here in Louisville. And my three things are tonight. One is with the e-bikes, the law that went into place that affects certain areas, but I'm not seeing it affecting sidewalks. And I'd be curious to find out what the enforcement's been like in the city because they're becoming a real menace around town, especially near schools. The other is accessibility of certain neighborhoods where there's been overgrowth of vegetation onto the sidewalks, making it difficult for people to be able to get through. And the last thing is I'm here to support what's going on in regards to the airport noise.
Thank you, Louis. Okay. We will then move on. Move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is council informational comments and committee reports. If people have had a committee meeting, please speak up if you've got other comments to make. That's great. Councilmember Fahy, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm doing a little update on the Colorado Municipal League. I was, I'm part of the policy committee. And we had a meeting last Friday and discussed whether or not we would be supporting some issues that are going to be coming up on the ballot. The policy committee just recommends to the CML as a whole whether or not we should support. And the findings were, almost all of them were at least 43 up to 50 in favor, oh, up to 55 on one, okay, for things like land use, for placement of sex offenders and mental — we want them to include sex offenders as part of, it needs to be at least 1,000 feet away from preschools, not just schools. Then taxation on lodging and vacancy taxes. There's three different proposals under that for drafting different legislation for regulating the taxes and things, the fees that we can charge. Then was an employment, municipal exemption from massage parlor background requirements. I don't know if any of you have read about the sexual assault that happened in a massage parlor. I believe it was in either Denver or Nevada. I'm not sure where. And they don't want that to be allowed in any other community. So they're talking about putting a bill on to prohibit that, to require the massage parlors to do a background check on all of their employees and on everybody that would either own or work in a massage parlor. The next is transportation and expanding the municipal use of Avis, which is Automated Vehicle Identification Systems. It's like the flock cameras that we just got rid of. But this is done on state highways and, or federal highways, sorry, interstate highways. And they're proposing that it also be allowed on state highways. And then the last one is a regulation of noise. And that was mostly by Supreme Court in Hobbs versus the city of Salida to allow the government to put more sound restrictions on how much noise can go from one property to another. So that's the update, that those things will be coming probably to the state level for votes. And we're talking about our positions on them, so.
Thank you. So, Dr. Kog met this past week at Denver Regional Council of Governments, for those keeping track. And it was really interesting conversation. Their RTD did a presentation on fast tracks and kind of where they're at. But there was also a presentation given to us, and I highly recommend if you want the detail, to go to the Dr. Kog website. It is posted, the details of the presentation. But there was a good overview for front-range passenger rail in the new district that our mayor is a part of, and how more definitively they are progressing. So this is great news. I will commend Mayor Chris Lay. His voice has been quite the champion for the city of Louisville. And it does look like there is going to be a spot secured as a stop on front-range passenger rail right here in Louisville, at least that looks like it is for now. By January of 2029 is when they would like to be starting this. And it's sort of an exciting endeavor. I'm really hoping that a lot of community members who, back in 2004, who voted for this and have been participating in their taxes going toward fast tracks, will enjoy the new rail that everyone is really working diligently to bring to this community. The beginning portion of it will be three round trips in the morning to and from Denver, or, well, Denver to Fort Collins, and then three round trips in the evening as well, Denver to Fort Collins. So it should, you know, really ease up our highways a lot, which we're seeing even more congestion on as we grow our population and become an even bigger favorite place to work and live. Thank you.
Others? Any comments? I just had a couple of announcements. One is, we've got an election coming up in just a couple of weeks. Those who have not registered, please do. It's really easy to do. Just go to the Colorado Secretary of State's website. They can register you right there online, and you can get updates about when your ballots being counted and all that kind of stuff. Ballots are already in the process of being sent out, and voting is taking place. So we've got a couple of really important things happening in Louisville, some initiatives to vote on, as well as in Ward 1, a Ward 1 council member race. So, the second thing is, if you are a Louisville business, please fill out our Business Satisfaction Survey. It's on the Economic Vitality part of the city's website. We're encouraging people to fill that out so that we can take lessons, learn from it, and actually put them toward the policies that are going to make it easier to do business here and more beneficial for all of us who live in Louisville. That's all I've got. Anybody else? All right. We'll move on to City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Council. I have three things. So October 29th, there are two open houses for the PROS Long Range Plan and Trails Master Plan update. Those opportunities are 12:30 PM and 5:00 PM at the Recreation and Senior Center. This Thursday evening, we have a Boards and Commissions Open House, 6:00 PM here at City Hall. We have multiple vacant positions on our Boards and Commissions with very few applications received so far. So we really encourage people that may be interested in serving on a Board or Commission to attend to learn more about it. And then next Tuesday evening, we have a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting in which Community Development will be presenting potential streamlining of development processes for Council and Planning Commission consideration so that we can facilitate getting applications processed. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll just echo your comment about, please, if you're interested in a Board or Commission position, a lot of us got our first taste of this kind of work in the city on various boards and commissions in the city. And it's been a great experience, I think, for most of us who've done that. Please consider the ones that are available and apply. If you have any questions about any of that, any of us can help you, but you can also go to the city's website on Boards and Commissions. All right. First item is a presentation on Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, or RMMA. Just before we get going on this, there's going to be a brief presentation and some comments, and we'll, we'll actually have a really good presentation up on the screen there. And then what we're going to do is to ask, council will have questions that can get those answered, and then we will take public comments, and then council can have a bit of a discussion after that. So that's kind of where we are. So, when we get going, who is going to start?
I can kick us off.
Okay. Oh, before we get going, we, last November, had appointed a couple of people on council. Councilmember Hefner and Councilmember Kern to work with our city attorney, Kathleen Kelly, and outside counsel concerning, investigating, getting some data, and providing to us an analysis of some options for dealing with a very pressing set of problems concerning RMMA. So with that...
Thank you, Mayor. You covered a lot of my introduction, but I'll give what's, what's left of it, which is just to say that when we all talked about this last as a group of seven, the decision was for the task force, which was me, councilmember Kern, and city attorney Kelly, to go try and first get some data about the volume and nature of flights over Louisville coming out of RMMA, and then second, to get some more specific legal advice about what, if anything, the city can do from a legal perspective or a lobbying political perspective to influence the impacts that the airport has been having on the, on the city. On the data side, the mayor mentioned we have with us Louisville resident Michael Burek, who has very, very generously volunteered both his time and his expertise, his engineering expertise, to compile and analyze the flight activity over Louisville coming out of RMMA. I think we should all take a moment at some point to thank him for all of the free consulting help, which we are extremely fortunate to have. He's a tremendous asset to the city. And I'll, I'll just mention, one reason we're having this presentation tonight is because we had to schedule around a rocket launch that Michael's involved in, so he obviously knows what he's doing. On the legal side, we did retain outside counsel specializing in aviation law to give us an assessment of what legal actions, if any, the city might be able to take. That full memo, as well as an executive summary, are both in the packet tonight. I hope everybody had a chance to take a look. I think the very short version is, the city is preempted, in most regards, from taking any direct legal action or regulatory action that would influence the number of flights coming out of the airport and flying over Louisville. But there, there may be worthwhile political and community-type engagement we want to consider going forward. We are not going to separately present the memo tonight. The outside counsel couldn't be with us. So certainly, I think, members of the task force are available to answer questions on that, to the extent there are any, but we're not planning to present it separately. I think altogether, you know, I just want to emphasize that I think we've come back with what we were asked to bring, and maybe this is not the beginning of the conversation, but not really the end of it either, and hoping for some fruitful discussion after everyone has a chance to absorb and digest this about what we might want to do next. And with that, I think councilmember Kern might also have some comments.
Thank you. That was an absolutely fantastic introduction. And I absolutely want to thank Michael as well. I really appreciate the work and time he put into this. And I'll add, this is the second time that he has been very generous with his time in providing us a lot of data. We really listened. We've been hearing the community. As we moved through this process, we started hearing from even new and more members of our community who had not been impacted by the flights. As you will see from Michael's information, there was a departure pattern change from Rocky Mountain that is more greatly impacting the western portion of our city. And we hear you, and that's part of the discussion, as all of council too, to have and what this means. Two points of note, though, that weren't, that will not specifically be brought up in Michael Slate data that I want to bring up, is we would and we want to be able to continue to advocate for the residents of Louisville, as Dietrich said, whether that's politically, legally, or maybe just having an airport be a good partner and the flight schools be better partners with us. And that does take patience and advocacy, but it also takes your voices. So I want to say thank you for always taking the time to let us know what your concerns are. We can't help to facilitate the change without all of you putting that effort in. So thank you for that upfront. The good news is, being the partner and also following some really excellent legislation with unleaded aviation fuel, one of the two fuel providers at the airport already has plans in place to have unleaded fuel available for aircraft next year, in 2026. So that's four years before the required deadline, which is excellent news. So it's moving in the right direction. And ideally, that will encourage the flight schools to invest in converting their aircraft sooner. So I thought I would throw that little piece of good news into the mix. And with that, I think Kathleen might have a little thing to say, and then thank you so much again, Michael, for presenting all the data and information to everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Kern. I don't have anything to add to the intro that, that you and councilmember Hefner provided. Thanks.
I think, Michael, I think you're up. And you're welcome to introduce yourself and say anything about the rockets that you might like in support of your presentation.
It's not my personal rocket. It was a research project that I'm working on at CU, and the research is to study the sun, what the sun does to affect things on Earth. So we do things like warn aircraft if there's a solar storm not to fly over the North Pole so that people don't get irradiated. That would be one thing that might come out of that sort of research. All right. So before I get started, I just want to say thank you to Dietrich and Judy for the opportunity to present these data and the trust that you're putting in me to give you a fair and balanced presentation. What I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to give you a, starting with a few slides to kind of give you background, to, to give you grounding in, sorry, give you grounding in kind of the rationale that I have, especially for the altitudes. You know, I was very particular about trying to get that right, and I'm going to explain to you in a little bit of detail about why and how I figured that out. So two or three slides of that. And then we'll go through a few different slide shows. There will be, from 2018 to 2025, I'll show the progression of traffic in those years. And you'll see visually, viscerally, what the, what the change is. So we start with all of the traffic, then we look at traffic that part of the track of the aircraft is lower than 1,000 feet above ground level. And then we look at aircraft that are below 500 feet. So three sets of slides. And then I'll dig into a couple of the days that kind of exhibit the worst of the days in May that I took a look at. And then we'll end with what Judy was talking about, the, the change in, in flight patterns. And that'll be it. Should go pretty quickly, I think. All right, let's get started. Okay, so to begin with, how do we get this, these data? We start, and can you see my pointer? Or is it just, okay, it's awfully small. So we start with the aircraft. And the aircraft since 2020 are required by the FAA to transmit flight data once a second. And you can see the list down here. I'm not going to go through this, but basic, our latitude, longitude, and altitude, speed, vertical speed, a number of parameters. All these parameters get transmitted once per second to what are called ADS-B receivers. So we have many aircraft, many receivers, and it's a lot of data. These data get transmitted to a database, and in this case, I'm using an academic database that's based in Switzerland. And in order for me to do that, I actually contribute data to the database as my payment to allow me to access these data. And then on the right is the visualization app that I wrote that shows what I'm pulling out of the database in context. Okay, the buttons, there we go. Okay, so I'm going to go into a little bit about what you'll see on the maps. The most important, one of the most important things is this square here. This square approximates the area of Louisville. And the important thing to know here is that anything, any time a flight goes over this square, it's counted. If it doesn't go over the square, it's not counted and it's also not visualized. So this is traffic that's specific to Louisville. The next point is that the traffic density gets more opaque the more flights there are. And the way that the maps are constructed, it would take eight flights in the same point on the map to actually make the, the map opaque. And you can kind of see down here, this is visualization of one fully opaque flight. Okay? So when you start to see basically nothing, you'll know that there's a lot of flights going through a certain area. And the point of this is that there's more density and less density in certain areas, and I wanted to highlight that. And then I'm going to skip down to the next concept, which is overpasses. So this is a variant from the way that the airport counts flights. Every time an aircraft flies over Louisville, that counts. So if it goes over and back, over and back, that's four, not one. So these counts are not going to be something that are, they're not going to be immediately comparable to what the airport gives you. So just to make sure that you understand that, the color is altitude. And I want to emphasize that the flights counted are only from RMMA. In other words, there's a pre-filter on the data, and if a flight starts in Boulder and flies back to Boulder and flies over Louisville, I'm not counting that. So this is specific to RMMA. Okay, and now just a brief recitation of, of the minimum flight rules. 1,000 feet is above the highest obstacle within a horizontal radius of 2,000 feet. Okay? And I'll show you a map next. So this is just pulled out of a legal document. So here's, here's the way that I determined what is above ground level. This is important. So the highest point in Louisville is a, is a cell tower that's near the water treatment plant at 5,703 feet. And this is actually in an FAA registry of buildings and towers and so on. So this is the official FAA highest point in Louisville. Now, I drew the little shaded circle to give you an idea of what 2,000 feet looks like. And what I decided was that it wouldn't be quite fair to use 5,703 as the, as the altitude, as, as the altitude, because it doesn't really cover most of Louisville. So what I did do is pull up this map, and this map is an elevation map of the ground, and, and I put a few points on it. And so it starts on the left at 5,667. That's near the freeway. So just to make sure that you understand that, the color is altitude. And I want to emphasize that the flights counted are only from RMMA. In other words, there's a pre-filter on the data, and if a flight starts in Boulder and flies back to Boulder and flies over Louisville, I'm not counting that. So this is specific to RMMA. Okay, and now just a brief recitation of the minimum flight rules. 1,000 feet is above the highest obstacle within a horizontal radius of 2,000 feet. Okay? And I'll show you a map next. So this is just pulled out of a legal document. So here's, here's the way that I determined what is above ground level. This is important. So the highest point in Louisville is a cell tower that's near the water treatment plant at 5,703 feet. And this is actually in an FAA registry of buildings and towers and so on. So this is the official FAA highest point in Louisville. Now, I drew the little shaded circle to give you an idea of what 2,000 feet looks like. And what I decided was that it wouldn't be quite fair to use 5,703 as the, as the altitude, as the altitude, because it doesn't really cover most of Louisville. So what I did do is pull up this map, and this map is an elevation map of the ground, and I put a few points on it. And so it starts on the left at 5,667, that's near the freeway on Davidson Mesa, and then it slowly slips down to 5595. So the rationale that I'm using is that this is probably the, the ground level that the aircraft need to clear for this 1,000-foot criteria. And also want to say that you'll see the numbers, 6,100 feet, that would be 500 feet above ground level, and 1,000, AGL is 6,600. So that's, that's, those are the numbers that I'm going to use when I say aircraft are below 500 feet. They're 500 feet below 6,600 feet. Okay? And that's the background now for the fun. So the first slideshow is all flights flying over Louisville, starting in 2018 and ending in 2025. And I'm going to just flip through this, just so you can get a sense of it. 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and 2025. Okay? I'm going to do that one more time. Okay, 2020, in 2025, we had a total of 3,992 overpasses for the month of May. That's 1,000 overpasses per week, or 142 per day, just to give you a little context. We'll come back to that. Okay, the next slideshow is flights less than 1,000 feet, and I'm going to do the same thing. So you notice that there's actually less in 2019, but they'll come back. 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. So you can see the increase over time. In this case, in May of the year, we had 1,517 overpasses where part or all of the flight path was under 1,000 feet above ground level. Okay? Told you this is going to go fast. The next set of slides is 500 feet above ground level, and I'm going to do the same thing. So starting in 2018, we have about 23, which is less than one per day. And then I'm going to just flip through. We had almost none in 2019, 2020, but gradually, 2024 and 2025, somehow, we had a huge jump in the number of flights, that part of the flights are less than 500 feet. Now, let me point out to you that the selection area, you see the black box there. I've zoomed in so you can see the individual flights, just so that you get a good sense of scale here. But where the, where the flight track is red is where the data shows me that the flight is less than 6,100 feet. If it's gray, that's there for continuity, so you can see the flights. It's probably a little bit more than 500 feet, but there isn't a lot of elevation gain over the, the city of Louisville. So it's basically at 500 feet, even if, if the line turns gray. Okay, next. So this is the whole thing again in graph form. I'll look at the total overpasses. We started off in 2018 at about 1,000 per month. That's the blue line, and slowly ticked up to 4,000. And you can see that the majority of the flights are propeller flights. And the line, let's see, the jet aircraft are, let me get this right, is the gray line. So the, the jet traffic has been increasing, but not at the same rate as the propeller traffic. And I'll just leave that there for people to look at later. Okay, so now I'm going to focus on May of 2025, which is the month that all of those graphics that I just showed you were based on. So looking at days of the month, we see a couple of days, a few days where there's a lot of flights. There's 250 flights, or 264, I think, is what I wrote down here, one day overpasses. And if you look at the 10 busiest hours, that would be 6:00 AM, and we'll talk about time in a minute. 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, that's an average of about 25 overpasses per hour. So almost one every two minutes on our busiest days. Now, you can see the variation day to day. These are weather variations. So if there's bad weather, they don't fly. And when there's nice weather, they crowd the skies. And that's what's being shown here. That's the reason for the variation. The second graphic here shows time of day in May, and starting at 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM, there were 115 flights in that hour, 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM. 500 flights from 6:00 AM to 7:00 AM. I don't know how early you guys get up, but I'm usually trying to sleep during those hours. And then it peaks at 8:00 AM. So our pilot friends are early birds. And the bulk of the, the flights are in the morning, and then it tapers down in the evening, say at what, we'll say 11, 12:00 AM, it's starting to taper down. One, one thing I want to point out here is there's a 12:00 AM, 22 flights. I believe this is just a data anomaly. Sometimes when you're processing the data, the data are not good, and I think that's what's, what's going on here. I don't believe that's a real number at midnight. I don't think we have midnight pilots. I'm going to look at the two busiest days now, and there's similar information here. 78 flights, I'm going to just pick a couple of things. 78 flights from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, that's a flight every 70 seconds. And this is the worst day of the month. So just to be fair here, this is, this is as bad as it gets. And I'm going to just skip that. Now, the last piece that I want to show you is what Judy was alluding to. As I understand it, on June 16th, the ATM wrote a memo to their staff, or whatever their hierarchy is, and said, "You shall use this new flight pattern." Okay? And the flight pattern is to fly toward the power station in Boulder until you leave Class D airspace, and then you can go wherever you want after that. That's, that was the new directive. And so the data reflects that, and I'm going to flip through that now. So I'm going to start in April, you know, kind of the same as we saw before. That's the May slide that you saw earlier. June is they start to, half of the month is, yes, half of the month is the new flight pattern. Here's July. Okay? So this is pretty obvious what they're doing at this point. And then September, oops, wait a minute. Sorry, I'm lost. Okay. August and September, it looks like they've kind of curved back over Louisville a little bit. So they were further west, and now they're kind of creeping back east. And that's what the data is showing us right now. Okay? And that's it. Questions?
First of all, thank you very much for this. I can't do quite what you're doing on my screen to move them that fast, but that was really helpful. And just so everybody knows, these materials are all in the packet that's online, so you can get them and, and do that yourself. But I, I want to give council members a chance to ask questions about the data that we've seen. Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you again, Michael, for volunteering. Just a few little questions. So you chose May. I'm just curious, could you give a general sense for how other months compare to May?
Well, you did get a little bit of a sense of that.
Yeah.
It varies, and I think a lot of it is weather. You know, when there's a lot of snow, they don't fly. When there's thunderstorms, they don't fly. When there's wind, like the last few days, very few flights. So it's, you know, they're very dependent on weather. I would say that the summer months are probably busier than the winter months. I could make a, a little study of that if council members are interested. It's about an hour's worth of work for me. So if you care to see that, I can, I can give you that data.
And then I was also curious, have you, have you seen any patterns in, like, which flights are low, or is there, I mean, or are there certain times of day, or, or is it just kind of, some of them are low and some of them are not, or?
For the purposes of this presentation, I did not do that.
Sure.
But I have already created a cross-reference to the flight identifiers, and I actually have a table that gets generated every time I do a visualization that gives all of the information on all the flights that are selected with the criteria. So if I'm asking for all flights under 500 feet, I'll get a list of those flights. And I think the next steps might be to analyze that. You know, I talked with Dietrich, and I said, "I can give you a spreadsheet of that," but I want to be really careful about that, because now we're personalizing it. And I think that a lot of care has to go into that. That's why I didn't present that tonight. That has to come with a lot of work and precision.
Yeah, okay.
And with that data, you could, in fact, say, "This flight school is, you know, got these habits. This flight school is doing this. You know, this aircraft is the one that's always low," or, you know, something like that. You can pull those patterns out of that data. I just haven't done it yet.
Right, okay. And then one last little question. So there's, basically in all of the images, there's sort of a concentration of flights to the east of Louisville?
To the east.
North, south, to the east of your box for Louisville?
Right.
Are those mostly return flights?
Probably, yeah. Well, that is the pattern. And again, this depends on wind. You know, they'll, they'll take off differently to the east if, if the wind is blowing. But basically, the pattern is to go to the power station, do their thing, and then come down 287, turn right at the Good Samaritan Hospital, that is their landmark, a hospital. And, you know, so that's generally this flight pattern. So those flights that you see on the right are flights that passed over Louisville earlier.
Right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Hamlet, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all the work that you've done to help provide this data, which, you know, from my perspective, reiterates what we've all been feeling over the past few years. My questions, I'm not certain if they're more for the, the task group that we have here or for you, so I'm going to throw them out there and see who answers. My first is, can someone remind me if there's certain, like, hours of operations for flights?
Happy to take it. Actually, the airport is open 24 hours a day. It does have a terror airport, means air traffic control. I think it's 6:00 AM or 5:00 AM till 10:00 PM.
Okay, but they're, they're legally allowed to fly outside those hours?
Correct.
Okay. And then second, you know, I'm assuming the altitude data that you showed us is because flying below those altitude is dangerous. Is there any legal enforcement regarding safety if there's evidence that an airport has pilots operating under those altitudes? I know, you know, legal action is limited, but I'm curious if that safety concern rises to the top for action.
This is the legal text again. This is from the FAA. It says, "Anywhere altitude allowing if power fails, an emergency landing without undue hazard to persons or property on the surface as a general principle, and then over congested cities, 1,000 feet above the highest obstacle." So this is considered the minimum safe altitude, 1,000 feet over congested city-type town settlements. So that's, that's, that's the statute.
Is this something that you guys discussed with our external legal counsel?
Do you want to take that one, Kathleen?
Sure. So complaint would be made to the appropriate regulatory agency, which would be the FAA, and there's really not a city role in that unless the city decides to take the data that we have and make some kind of complaint. But, you know, where it goes beyond that, the city would have no control over that.
That's all for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
My comment is, it might be possible to take that to the airport and say, "What's going on here? Do you want to do something about that? You know, do we want to make a cooperative effort to do something about this, rather than jump right to the legal?"
Councilmember Fehy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mike, for everything you're doing with this. I just want to, in addition to thanking you, ask, is there, I've been told that there's some reason, one of the reasons, anyway, for early morning flights or late night flights is the, the ability to get lift and get it quickly enough to get up to altitude by the required distance. Is that accurate, and what can we do about that?
It is accurate to a certain degree. Colder air is denser, and yes, you can. And, you know, I'll let pilots speak to this, but from a general physics point of view, the denser air allows more lift. I think I can leave it at that.
So, so that they can reach altitude at a shorter distance in the morning and the evening?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what percentage difference that is. I'm not sure that it's significant.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kern, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, all right. Others? Questions? Okay. Thank you again, and right now, we're going to take some public comment. So, Mike, could you leave your computer up there and, or not? We may, my bet is you may get enlisted again to, to open it at some point, but why don't we?
Do you mind leaving that last slide open for us, Michael? That would just be interesting and food for thought for everyone as they're kind of bringing their comments forward. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me tell you what it is, then. So this is, I pulled the lens back.
Yeah, to see the whole, we discussed this. There was, there's an interesting picture of the whole region, correct, with all the other airports? I think it's in the packet.
Correct.
One of the, one of the things that we noticed, even though all the flights originate or come back to Rocky Mountain, and they are flying over us, it's interesting to see, and you'll see the red circles around Boulder Airport, Longmont Airport, Greeley, NOCO, which is up north Fort Collins, and you can sort of see Erie, but there's so much overpass that it's almost masked, so.
Right. And again, these are flights that originate or end, or originate and end in RMMA. These are not flights that are local to those airports. This is the, the aircraft load that RMMA is putting on the whole region, including the other airports. So I will leave that up.
Thank you very much. I have a feeling we have got some public comment? Yeah?
First up is Louis Delaware, followed by Randall Bai. I do. First up is Louis Delaware, followed by Randall By.
I don't have any, any comment. I don't, no.
I don't have any comment on this, other than I support making some sort of way of, of dealing with separating the flow through the, through the town. It used to be kind of universal through the town. Now it seems to be more towards the western edge, which unfortunately is where many of us live.
Make sure. Can you state your name and whether you're from Lewisville?
Louis Delaware, Lewisville, Colorado resident.
Thank you. Thank you for setting a good example. Go ahead.
Next up is Randall By, followed by Keaton Howe.
Randall By, Lewisville resident. Based on looking at this, is that we've all noticed that there's been an increase in flights over Lewisville. And that's a nuisance, but I guess I wanted to address the safety issue that you were talking about. Based on some investigation, it appears that RMMA has got the third worst safety record in Colorado airports. And to address that, the FAA altered the flight path, as Michael talked about, effective in June. And what I'm wondering is, does anybody know exactly what the underlying safety issue was that affected the flight path change? Hopefully, these aren't rhetorical questions. Do you know?
They use, excuse me, they use a phrase, they use a phrase that I find a little scary, potentially significant events.
One thing, just as, thank you, thank you. One thing is a matter, just as how we, how we do this, it's a little bit, I realize, it's not always terribly easy. When we do a public comments, you're making the comments, one after another, and then-
Fair enough.
It would be, it would be difficult to answer each person each time that happens, and then we're going to have a conversation afterward. And we may get Michael to weigh in on some of these questions afterward.
So I came to the same, the same conclusion in the investigation. Looking at FAA emails and whatnot, they were, they were saying, but they were purposely vague as to what it was. And so my question then became is, is that how does changing the flight path and getting more flights over Lewisville mitigate whatever your safety issue is? Okay? So I talked, I talked to a pilot friend that had been flying since we were in high school, a long time ago.
Right.
And he was saying that one of the reasons was, is the potential issue is, over Lewisville, there are potentially better landing sites, roads, golf courses, things like that for people that are messing up. And so while there's, they're addressing their safety issue, it becomes my safety issue, about what they're doing flying over my house. And by the way, I was looking at planes today, and it looks like they're around 150 feet over some of the houses on Davis and Mesa. So if you can address their, the safety issue, that may be some footing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Next up is Keaton Howe, followed by Diana Barney.
Hi, Keaton Howe, Lewisville, Colorado. This doesn't extend, doesn't it? I'll bend down. Maybe I can lift it up. Thank you, council members. Thank you, staff members. Thank you, Michael. That was a great presentation. I think it put together a lot of my concerns. I'll be pooling together most of the Ward II citizens' time, so if we could reset the timer to 12 hours and 45 seconds. No, I'm just joking. I won't do that. But I do want to talk about the noise. And I'm a Lewisville resident and homeowner since 2002. I am increasingly alarmed by the incessant and persistent noise generated by low-flying aircraft over the McAslin Corridor particularly. These flights have grown more and more frequent as we see. And, and this is a great diagram to look at because it seems to me like there's a lot of touch and goes. The amount of traffic seems to be, can you hear me? The amount of traffic seems to be in a designated area. It's not all leaving and coming back. It's all concentrating, which tells me that it may be the flight schools. I think that this noise, in a global scale, a global picture, can undermine our quality of life, threatening both our health and property values. The constant aircraft noise affects our health and well-being. Numerous studies have shown that prolonged exposure to higher decibel noise levels is linked to elevated stress, sleep disturbances, and cardiovascular issues. I've been approached by both children and elderly in my neighborhood, finding it difficult to sleep or concentrate. As Michael mentioned, the early noises, I'm sure all of us sleep beyond 6 o'clock AM in some, some days. Kids have trouble doing their homework. Elderly have trouble sleeping, particularly during these early mornings and late evenings. The loudest and lowest airplanes overhead are these small propeller planes, consistent with pilot instruction. The Rocky Mountain Airport currently has five aviation instruction schools. At least that's what I could find online. There may be more. And according to this rule, this 91.119 FAA rule, it's a federal rule, they need to clear 1,000 feet. And I think they're cutting the corner probably right over my house, because it certainly sounds like they're trying to gain elevation on their ascent. As your constituent and neighbor, I ask that we work to reduce this overhead airplane noise. Maybe we could create a cloverleaf takeoff. I don't know if that affects safety. Let's ensure that the 1,000 feet is being followed. Maybe we could condense or reduce flight school times. Maybe we encourage them to not go leaded or unleaded. Maybe we could get them to go electric. Thank you for your time, and I do appreciate all your leadership for this, for this topic. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Keaton.
Next up is Diana Barney, followed by Sonali Marlin.
Hi, thank you. First, I'm super excited to hear about the train coming. I've lived here in Lewisville way more than 30 years. I love it. It is the bomb. But I am enraged and, and, talk about stress, yes. Every morning, I would go outside, drink a cup of coffee. Our yard is quiet. It's peaceful. The sun is coming up. I can give you absolute certainty that the flights start at 5:00 AM. They're over my house at 5:00 in the morning, and they're going when I go to bed at 10:00 at night. It never stops. It's just too much. Anyway, it sounds like the FAA does not care at all about plane noise. It's like way down on their list of priorities. And from what I understand, if we've been stopped from legal action, it sounds like we need to go to the next highest entity. I don't know if that's the county commissioner that goes to the FAA. I don't know what is the what. I'm so grateful to hear that you have been researching this issue all of this time because I've just been fuming by myself at home. So what I would like to know from the city is, what is the step that I can take and my enraged friends who also complain to me? What can we do to get this step going? Because this is how I feel about it. This is public space above us. The sky is all of ours. And I don't know how it got co-opted by a business. I mean, we're all giving up a lot, a lot, for a business to fly over us. It's too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Next up is Sonali Marlin.
Yes, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, Sonali Marlin, Lewisville resident. I have been a Lewisville resident since 2002. I happen to live on the western edge of Lewisville as well, and I'm just so happy to see data supporting what I thought was just me imagining that the traffic has gone up tenfold in terms of number of aircraft flying directly over my house. I am one of the early birds, because I am a teacher, and so I usually am up at 6:00 when the first planes start flying over my house. My usual preferred activity would be 6:00 to 6:45. I sit and enjoy my cup of coffee, watch the sun come up, and listen to some bird song. And that has pretty much vanished. And I think, as we could see from the data, it seems like it's even worse this year. But it has probably been getting worse every year. And suddenly, I think in May, maybe of this year, is when I actually first noticed that it's every 30 seconds sometimes, or every minute, that another prop plane is flying. You know, I walk my dog, and as one plane's noise is fading, there's another one coming right over the horizon, or sometimes two. And they are super low. They are very noisy, and it has completely changed the flavor of life here. So I am just super eager to, that there are other people that care about this very passionately. I'm so thankful to leadership in Lewisville and the city council. I've complained both to RMMA as well as the FAA, and I am just looking forward to seeing what we can do to come up with a solution. You know, I come from a family of pilots. My dad's a pilot, and so I love planes, but not, you know, not at the expense of sort of just this airspace that's so congested and all the noise. And it would be great to come up with some sort of solution so we can all enjoy not just seeing the occasional prop plane fly overhead, but also enjoy nature and bird song and peace and quiet a little bit more. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sonali. Thank you for the contributions of the comments so far. We'll take it back to council to talk a little bit more about what we've heard, what we've seen, and perhaps a few ideas of where to go next, to the extent that we want to flesh that out a little bit. So I've got some ideas, but I know others probably do, too. Yes?
I want to start with two little questions, maybe for council members Kern and Huffner. First of all, thank you for your work on this. One, in the memo, there was not really much discussion about airspace restrictions. And, you know, we can see in this that there are many, many, many fewer flights going south. And something that I have not looked into myself is, you know, are there restrictions or, or whatnot that prevent flights from going south?
So there, it's not that there are restrictions on it. This is 100% around where the flight schools want to do their training. And the designated training grounds that come out of Rocky Mountain Airport are to the north of us. And this is where the majority, I mean, these are people who we need to supply new pilots for. So I want to start by saying, we have a lot of flight schools because we have United as a headquarters here, right? And McAir has a, what they consider to be like a direct path. They have a partnership with the airlines. So, and they also partner with Metro State. And so the university sends their students to Rocky Mountain, specifically to McAir, for their flight school training so that we all can continue to have pilots with thousands of hours of flight training and experience before they're flying the jumbo jets that we take off in in Denver. We do need this, unless we'd like to cut a lot of the commercial traffic down in half and reduce our ability to fly. We kind of saw that with COVID. There's a lot of pilots that are retiring. So this is part of what we found out about where this uptick has come into. So, good and bad is, we have a lot of really well-trained pilots in the air. The bad is that we're part of that unfortunate process below them. So they can fly south, and they do when they train in other airports. So when they're doing long-distance flights or they're practicing to fly in and out of Colorado Springs Airport or Pueblo. So that's some of that traffic that you see going south. But there aren't the training grounds there, and I think that's more conversation with the FAA and the flight schools.
And who designates the training grounds?
The flight schools. The flight schools work with the, with the FAA to, to have that.
And then one other little question, which maybe is for staff. I'm just curious, what is the status of the city's involvement with the Part 150 study? Is there any involvement or not really?
Staff has participated in the different open houses that they've had. We've also advertised the website where the public can submit input related to the Part 150 study, but that's been the extent. There hasn't been direct communication specifically between RMMA and the city to provide that direct input. So we've been participating like other members of the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? Yeah? Councilmember Bratton?
Just want to share my thanks again to Michael for the presentation and, and, you know, others have said it, but, you know, I think one of the goals we had in doing this work is to pull together some objective facts to match up with what we've been hearing from citizens. I think that the frequency of citizen complaints has certainly gone way up, and that was a great indicator that, you know, things have gotten worse. Seeing it visualized is, I mean, it's just staggering, the, the amount of the increase of traffic over Lewisville. And I don't know that I have a lot of clear next steps, but I think that the diagnosis here couldn't be more clear that this, this problem, you know, it's a problem for us, and it's gotten worse over the last few years, and like, much, much worse. It's not a small increase. It's a huge increase. And, you know, whatever the flight path may be, it seems like it's going to go over some part of Lewisville. I'm not sure. It's, it's very difficult.
Councilmember Kern.
So I'd like to recommend and see how the rest of you feel. Obviously, we're limited on the number of people who can participate in this. If you wanted to keep Dietrich and I on task, that'd be fine. But I think that it would behoove us to have partnership conversations or at least express a lot of the residents' concerns with the flight school administrators and explain to them what's happening. Also, they want their students to be safe. They want to teach them the best practice. I truly believe that. And I think with Michael's information, perhaps we can take that to the flight schools, maybe even the airport administration. We had an opportunity a month or so ago, staff and a couple members of council, to tour the airport, talk with airport administrators, and they're, they absolutely do not want to be part of the problem. They want to be part of the solution. They are, I think, equally as frustrated that they don't have control to just designate a change. So they, they are working, like I said, to convert the fuel, which is a huge safety concern, but they also want to facilitate the flight schools as much as possible with what they want to do. So that's where I'm, I would like guidance, direction, if you will, since this is our opportunity to have a conversation publicly on how all of you feel about us pursuing a, like, a path to conversation. And we bring the data. We showed them the slides. I mean, as Dietrich said, I mean, the first time that Michael showed us these, it was absolutely profound. And I was looking at a lot of your faces here tonight, and I think you felt the same way. I mean, it's unreal what we're all experiencing. And as I was purping for tonight's meeting this morning, I'm listening to the planes going over my property. So, and all I could think of was, oh, my gosh, here we are about to talk about this, and I can barely think through my own thoughts because there's so many planes. Like, I think it was 15 in 16 minutes is what I counted. And so, and it was. It was a beautiful day today. Skies were calm. Weathers, the temperature was low. It was a perfect fly day. So, yeah, so we experienced that. But I would like to get the feedback from you and see if we can continue some engagement.
Others? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman?
I mean, I would certainly be interested in some kind of engagement along those lines. I wonder if we should broaden it to the Jefferson County Commissioners? I mean, ultimately, they make decisions, sort of, I mean, no?
No, the county commissioners, so Jefferson County is an owner of the airport, and similar to the airport, they have some legal authority with the ground operations. The FAA is the sole authority on anything that's in the air. And the flight schools are then following the pattern, the departure, the times that the FAA designates. So unfortunately, the commissioners don't regulate that piece of it.
Yeah, so I meant, I think I understand that, just that the, you know, I mean, the, since the DEFCO owns the airport, right, they are ultimately responsible for administration of the airport. So I, I mean, I don't know if this is the best route to go, but if we're talking with the airport, you know, would it also be worthwhile talking with- talking with the airport, you know, would it also be worthwhile talking with the commissioners who are administering the airport ultimately?
And public comment going to them. I think when county, the county commissioners are elected, right? And they would probably, I think, it would be very worthy for them to hear from and read the comments from the community members.
Other, other thoughts? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
I'll say, as next steps, it seems reasonable to me to approach leadership at the airport to have a conversation, exactly who is in the room. You know, I think we can strategize what that might look like, whether it's involving Jeffco County Commissioners or Boulder County, or just start with us because it's our data and tell our story and own it. So I think we can maybe take that exact strategy offline, but I think next steps to approach it as, you know, a more collaborative conversation and open dialogue about the data we have in front of us, and then see how they respond to that. And that can inform what, what we would do thereafter.
I agree that it would be helpful to partner with the airport and with the county. But I think the most effective manner of approaching for conversation and compromise cooperation would be to approach the flight schools themselves and talk to the pilots and explain the situation, explain the impact that their choices make on the residents and why we're getting so many public comments about it. I think most of the flight schools and the pilots would be willing to make some adjustments if they were asked in a kindly way and explained why, and explained to them how much of an impact their actions have on all of the residents of a whole city.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
I'll keep my comments super short, but, yeah, it just, it seems from everything I've read and everything I've looked at in my time on council is, you know, our, our best path forward is to try to affect behavior, not rules. We're going to have a really, really, really hard time changing rules, but maybe we can have a bigger effect changing behavior because it's a choice each pilot is making within, within the given rules they have. So that's where I'd put most of our efforts.
I'm going to perhaps take a little bit different, or a slightly different view. First of all, RMMA is, is certainly a big contributor to the economy of the area. I mean, I think we need to appreciate that. There's a lot of people fly in and out of there. There's a lot of business that gets done through there. There will be a lot of business that gets done. We supply, that airport will supply, train and supply pilots to, to fly planes around here. And that's positive. Those are positive things. However, they have through, and I, by, by they, I have much less patience with the county commissioners of Jefferson County. I'm frankly, I've seen this over years now of watching this problem, responding to it. When three of us on council went out to the airport to take a tour, they were very nice, showed us a lot of things out there. County Commissioner from Jefferson County was invited, did not come. I didn't take it personally, but I also recognize that that was an opportunity that that person could have had to come and talk with us and didn't take it. I know from working with county commissioners in Boulder County and working with mayors in the area that unfortunately, there has been far too much dithering on the items that can be affected. I think the Mayor Protem is absolutely right. There's very little, and I think not just Mayor Protem, but the memo that's in the packet is very clear. There are very few legal options that are likely to be very successful. And I'm fine with that because, not fine with it, but I accept that. And I don't particularly want us to engage in litigation to try to accomplish what we are unlikely to accomplish. Waste a lot of money, time, and effort trying that route. I, I do think that, one of the things that I, I pulled away from the memo was that the county has control over land use, and they have some control over how that operation works. They don't have any control over what happens once aircraft leave the ground. And that's the way it is. But they've been, you know, they're one county, and they're imposing externalities on Boulder County, on Broomfield, on parts of Adams, and it's ridiculous that one county can and has seen fit to bully the other counties. One of the things that I was going to suggest, I think there's a variety of ways, and I think it's perfectly fine to be collaborative. And I don't want to, lest anybody think that what I'm suggesting is, is simply pounding the table. That's not what I'm going to suggest at all. I think there's a kind of multi-pronged approach that I would suggest. One is, I think it is good for us to maintain the connections with RMMA that we have, to reach out to the flight schools, to maintain a contact with the RMMA administrators. We've done that. I think we established, I think, a pretty good relationship the day that we were out there. It was very, very pleasant. I think participating in the Part 150 survey is really good. I think people continuing to do their complaints to the FAA, I think really important data that can be contributed from that. It's not always something that, you know, it's not going to be something that registers immediately and gets results immediately, but those complaints are really important. There are two, I guess, big grants that have been applied for, and one recently by the airport. I confess that I don't know exactly where those projects are in the process. I think there is a, and I'm not going to pretend to understand as much about the environmental impacts and the kinds of studies that need to be done with respect to those, but I, I'm going to put Councilmember Hefner on the spot for just a second. Is there a, like a NEPA study or something like that that they have to do in connection with those?
I don't know, and I don't, don't want to guess.
Okay. Well, that's fair enough. But there was, there was reference to that in the, in the memo. I, so I think there, these are things that we can keep an eye on. I guess one of the other things is, and perhaps the, the thing that I may be able to contribute to this, is that the, I'm a part of, as a mayor, a group of Northwest mayors and county commissioners, which is what you might imagine it to be in Colorado, which is mayors along the 36th corridor primarily associated because of common interests in transportation, usually ground transportation. At the last meeting that we had, which was just a couple of weeks ago, we discussed the possibility of taking some sort of collective action. And by that, I mean putting political pressure perhaps on folks in Jefferson County to do better. I don't know what that's going to involve. If it is, we haven't really, I haven't necessarily gotten the authorization of council to do that, but there are five mayors of the six in that group. One county commissioner who's not all that thrilled about expanding our reach to do something like this, and the Mayor Boulder who says he wants to hear about it when we talk about it in the meeting. But the mayors of Boulder, or excuse me, Longmont, Superior, Westminster, Broomfield, and I expressed an interest, which is nearly 400,000 people, representing nearly 400,000 people. We express some interest in perhaps expanding that scope enough to be able to say something to the folks in Jefferson County to try to get them to listen to reason. So I think, I agree with the steps that have already been mentioned. I think those are good. I think this other step is perhaps, I don't want to use the term good cop, bad cop here, but I will. I think there's, there's good things that can be done in collaboration. I think sometimes political officials need to be dealing with other political officials and calling, calling a spade a spade here because it is a mess. So I would, I would suggest that in addition to the other kinds of things that we've talked about. Other thoughts? What do you think about things that we've talked about on the table? I'd be very interested. Councilmember Hefner.
I, I agree. I mean, I think you set out a reasonable plan. I think we need to pursue, you know, essentially all of the above in some fashion or another to keep this project going. And which isn't to say we're going to get overnight results, but I think it is worth the effort.
Others? Pardon? No, not at the moment.
Chris? Can I reclaim some of my time?
We're done with public comment.
Well, I just want to say, one thing I want to say is, there's power numbers, and many of us don't know how to be able to contact.
We can't, we're done with public comment, okay? I think the only other thing that is, I'll, I'll respond to it just to be moving on. I think people can certainly do what they want in the city to raise the awareness of the Jeffco County Commissioners. I would be the last to say that if I were a Jeffco Commissioner, I wouldn't be impressed if a bunch of people from Lewisville and Westminster and Broomfield and Longmont came to a meeting and complained. I'd be hard-pressed to say I wouldn't be pretty significantly affected by that. So you can take that as encouragement to do just that and to complain to them if that's something that you choose to do. Go ahead.
Just a follow-up. They, so in addition to this presentation being posted on the city website, there, there would be information, like a direct link, I think the city manager mentioned it, where people can post complaints or concerns in the, the noise study that's going on, but also directly to the airport. So the contact information, if anybody wants it, should be available on our webpage to try and make it as simple as possible.
Other thoughts? Yeah?
Just kind of one other idea. Again, I don't know if it's useful or not, but I don't know, is it worth approaching the FAA as a city about, one, you know, policing these low-altitude flights, and two, the change in the pattern that has significantly affected the western side of Lewisville?
Councilmember McKernan.
I'd say that Councilmember Hefner's comments on, we should be doing all of the above, that falls into the all of the above. I completely agree. And I think, as Councilmember Hamilton said, starting local with our Lewisville concerns, the data that a Lewisville resident pulled up for us, I mean, we did not, this data was not provided by the FAA. I mean, this, I mean, it is from a reliable source, but it was not from the FAA. So I think we start there and we start ramping up, if you will, and, and see where we go. I mean, I think that Councilmember Fahy made a good point and the Mayor Protem, that sometimes collaboration can, and concern just for the community can actually go a long way. So we'll bring that, this is my recommendation, we start there and let Chris kind of work some, let the mayor work a little bit of the big stuff behind the scenes with the other mayors and, you know, approach it from both ends. And if we have to get to that level, and I agree with you, I think that turning the information in, that was one of the reasons we asked Michael specifically for that data. Those of us who live on the ground, we can tell that those planes are low. And so it was a matter of, where is the data? And then it is a matter of, what do we do with it? I genuinely believe retaliation or asking for those kinds of measures should not be the first step that we take. I think that we should approach this in a, like, more collaborative and civil approach and, and then let the airport move on and do what's necessary with the flight schools and take action, I think.
Yep. To be, to be clear, nobody's going to take any retaliation against the airport. And I hope we're not, we're not understood to be advocating for that. I, I think all these kinds of advocacy can be helpful and, and lest you worry too much. It's, it's, from the mayor's standpoint, I think it's just, it's just a way of saying, look, pay attention, and let's work more collaboratively in the future on this stuff because it is really a problem for a lot more people than they may think. But other, any other comments to add to this? Any, yeah, final words?
Just maybe a clarifying question for the group, which is, you know, as I understand the, the scope of work for the task force, we've sort of completed what was originally asked. Is the idea with the further advocacy that that's a task force effort? Is it a staff effort? Is, are there other folks who, who would like to do it? I'm certainly not jealously guarding my seat on the task force.
All good questions. I think some of these items on the list are things that the community does, right? Participation in the complaint process, for example, that kind of stuff. I think the, the contacts with the flight schools might be something, I, with you, I don't know that we on council suggested that we wanted you to continue working past this current presentation. So I think that's something we might want to flesh out. I don't know that we can do it from the dais right now. I think how we do that and the timeframe for doing that is something we can perhaps, I want to say, either kind of put together a plan to present to council of the next steps. We could right now say who's willing to go over to, to the airport and present these data, or go over to the flight schools and present the information. I'm not sure we're ready to do that, but I'm open to suggestions otherwise. Do we, does anybody have any suggestions about that?
I'd say it would be at least, at a minimum, set a time for us to have a meeting to discuss what we're going to do as a council to get this solved. And if it is to continue with the task force and have you go over and talk to the flight schools, I would be in favor of that. But some kind of discussion about, very soon, about how we're going to approach the flight schools and the airport.
The question is one of, yeah, go ahead.
So I wonder if maybe, recognizing there's a desire to sort of revisit this, maybe Judy and I can sort of synthesize a list from the discussion tonight of action items and bring that back as a, as a future update during our update period.
I think that's a good suggestion if you are available.
It's a great idea.
Love to make a list.
All right. And then we can go from there. Councilmember Hamilton, you do you have any, were there others, other comments, questions, concerns? Right. Thank you all for coming. Just the numbers of people here, and I know not all of you are here for the same thing, but we hear you and see you, and we know that you hear and see those planes. And we'll be on this. Thank you. Why don't we move then to the next item on our agenda, which is ordinance number 1908, Series 2025, an ordinance rezoning lot one, block three, Jefferson Place subdivision from residential medium density to community commercial zone district, second reading, public hearing. And so we can let it set up at the mic. This one is an ordinance, so there's going to be two. We're going to get a staff presentation, and I don't know if the applicant has a presentation. We'll have two rounds of public comment total, and obviously we'll have time, council members will, to ask questions and then talk about it. But let us open the public hearing. But, let us open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Emily Klein-Gibson, Planner Two, with the staff presentation. This is the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 1908, series 2025, which is a request to rezone 811 Walnut Street from residential medium density to commercial This property is part of the Jefferson Place subdivision, which was platted in 1880. It's located centered along Walnut Street with Lafarge Avenue to the west and Main Street to the east. The building was constructed in 1954, prior to any citywide zoning. The building was originally built for Louisville's Switchboard Operating Center, was placed in a residential zone when citywide zoning was established later in 1962. The building was then sold in 1975, and between 1975 and 1978, the property was rezoned to its current residential medium density zoning. And three special review use certificates were granted for the office, for office space, a salon, and a pet grooming shop. Present-day zoning code clearly defines the SRU review process and would not allow any of the previously approved SRUs in the, in the current RM zone district, which means that all the previously approved SRUs are considered non-conforming. Once a non-conforming use ceases operation for at least one year, the use is no longer valid. The property is currently used as an office, and all other approved special review uses or SRUs have not remained in operation, which means the office use is the only valid SRU. The request is to rezone the property from RM to commercial community or CC, which is the current zoning of the downtown Louisville area. The requested rezone is so the historically commercial building can be allowed the same commercial land uses as the downtown area. As shown on the zoning map on the screen, the property is on the edge of the CC zone district, which is that red area, and it begins on the other side of an existing alley that runs along the eastern property line of the subject property. At this time, the applicant does not anticipate any exterior alterations to the property, and any future exterior alterations or redevelopment would require a PUD and must be approved at public hearings. Staff reviewed all potential new uses that would be permitted on the subject property with the rezone that are currently not permitted in the RM zone. They can be shown on the table here on the screen. There are 22 total new uses that would be permitted with the rezone. Nine of those would be permitted by right, and the remaining 13 would be permitted as an SRU or special review use. The property is adjacent to residential zoning, so all uses that require an SRU approval would not qualify for administrative procedure and must be approved at public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. Staff finds that all by right uses are fully enclosed within the building and do not include any exterior components, and any uses that may include exterior components such as outdoor dining would require review and approval as an SRU at those public hearings. The municipal code outlines four criteria for rezoning requests. Staff find that criteria two applies to this request, which states the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it's in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. Staff finds the area zoning has changed over time and has resulted in an underutilized commercial building. The original Switchboard Operating Center use group is no longer existing as a land use category in our current zoning, and there are few RM uses that work with the building's existing commercial conditions. Additionally, all previously approved SRUs beside the office SRU have expired, so the building doesn't qualify for most of its previously commercial uses. While the rezoning would allow a broader range of commercial uses, it again does not permit significant redevelopment or expansion without that further public review process. The building size and the site's physical boundaries further limit the scale and intensity of future commercial uses. So, staff believes the change represents a reasonable extension of existing downtown zoning rather than a major departure from the current neighborhood character. The rezone is also supported by the Comprehensive Plan, which encourages the city to support revitalizing existing downtown structures and promoting job creation and increased local Planning Commission reviews this, reviewed this proposal at a public hearing on September 25th and recommended approval as presented. Staff also recommends approval of ordinance number 1908, series 2025. This concludes the staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant also has a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any councilmembers have questions of staff? Councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you for the presentation. I was curious, have our regulations about doing residential development on this lot, for instance, have they changed since it was first zoned as residential? So, in other words, I'm curious is, like, is it harder to put a residential use there, say, now than it used to be in the past?
Yeah, I'm not sure specifically the answer to that. I do know that our land use code has been updated a few times since the original establishment in 1962, but in terms of specifically if it's easier or harder, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. That's fine. And then just one other little question. You mentioned in the report about if we do the rezoning, extending the downtown design guidelines to this plot, and I'm just curious, is the applicant all right with doing that?
Yes, so this, that would be a staff-initiated text amendment. The applicant has expressed their support for the change, and we, of course, would work with the applicant and property owner with that amendment.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Can we get the applicant presentation?
Hello. My name is J.D. Green. I'm the owner of 811 Walnut Street. I'm not a Louisville resident. Thank you to Emily for the presentation. I thought it was very thorough and went over everything that the property's been the last 40 years, 50 years. Our request to rezone from RM to CC brings the zoning into alignment with the building that has operated commercially for decades and allows for a small locally-owned retail use consistent with the old-town walkable character. I'd like to introduce George Colbert with Colbert Hat Company, and he'll go over the business that he plans on putting in this spot and go into more detail with that. Thanks, George.
Great. George Colbert, local resident here. While I'm, I've got a quick presentation I'll pull up here while I'm doing that. Let me see if I can find it here. I would like to thank PC event. I don't know where it went. Oh, rezoning, there it is. Perfect. Got it. While I'm pulling, excuse me, while I'm pulling that up, I'd like to thank, can I go into presentation mode by chance? Oh, yeah, perfect. There we go. Slideshow, from the beginning. Okay, great. I would like to thank Officer Adams and staff, everybody here who helped with the medical emergency. Really appreciate reaching out to the fire department, Louisville Fire Department, who got here very quickly. Unfortunately, my mother-in-law had a medical event right before the meeting started, and if you know my mother-in-law, she's going to find a way to be seen. I'm, I'm told she's doing, she's doing well, she's at the hospital, but this is on-brand for Barb Hamilton. Just real quickly, we would love to have a, a retail spot here at 811 Walnut. So, just want to tell you a little bit about who we are. Colbert Hat Co. is a locally-owned, family-owned, high-end custom cowboy slash cattlemen fedora and trucker hat company. We're seeking our first storefront in historic downtown Louisville and would love to tell you a little bit about us. That's us. My wife was here earlier, but unfortunately, she is at the hospital with my mother-in-law. Mike Land's my wife, and these are our two boys, both Monarch High School graduates. We've been here about six years. So, what do we do? We provide a unique retail experience that will enhance our downtown character. We specialize in customized fitting, shaping, and styling experiences for a wide range of customers. Our business operates about 80% on appointment, so it's low-impact, low-traffic. We do, however, support a number of pop-ups and provide hat bars at special events, et cetera, et cetera. But, quite frankly, Colbert Hat Co. will be a destination spot. People will, will, for high, high-quality visitors, they're going to come in to spend time at our location. Excuse me. Additionally, our products complement other nearby retail businesses such as Eleanor, Acme, The Gilded Frame. I want to repeat, we complement, we do not compete with. But, these high-quality visitors and local folks, but the high-quality folks that are going to, they're going to travel here from other zip codes, they're going to spend, they're going to have access to an experience that typically was sought only available in bougie mountain town, resort towns, that kind of stuff, right? So, we're trying to make that approachable to the front range. We expect the majority of our customers to make an afternoon or an evening out of their experience, whether it's grabbing dinner in a Texas slushie at Lulu's Barbecue or a burger and a drink at Waterloo before styling a hat or even matching an outfit at Acme or in Eleanor. We, we expect those folks who come to shop at our spot to spend time and dollars at other Louisville businesses. Our hats have become very popular, especially this summer, at many of the locally-established events. A hat shaping experience appeals to visitors attending the street fair, parades, farmers' markets, et cetera. The Pints in the Park was a really big success for us. Many of the folks that came there were really excited about the opportunity to bring friends and family back once we have a storefront. I'd also like to talk about weddings real quickly. Colorado weddings with a Western flair are extremely popular. Many wedding planners, brides-to-be, et cetera, are looking for event spaces, towns, cities, et cetera, that can offer a combined experience, not just a venue. Hat bars are very popular and in high demand with limited availability. So, I just bring that up to, you know, to kind of beg the question, wouldn't it be great to have more weddings here in Louisville? In fact, we had a booth at a, oops, excuse me, we had a booth at the Denver Bridle and Wedding Expo recently. There were thousands of brides-to-be, all looking for venues, businesses, and experiences to add to their weddings. We were able to speak with hundreds of those folks and couples that stopped by our booth, and they, you know, a lot of them had questions about venues. So, it was an opportunity for us to promote ourselves, but also to promote Louisville and say, "Hey, there's a great new venue in town called the Simon that we would love to partner with, and here's an opportunity to, to offer combined services, plus we have great air, or, what are they, Airbnbs, VRBOs, places to stay, potentially new hotels." So, just wanted to bring that up a little bit. Every couple that stopped by at the booth really wanted to try on one of our hats and take pictures. We could barely keep up with cleaning it. It was, it was quite the task to keep that, that hat clean. But, I think it's a very, very great opportunity here. One other thing I'd like to throw out is we're also very proud NIL sponsors of some local athletes. These ladies here are women's basketball players at CSU and CU, and they're, they're kind of digging our stuff. So, we expect that to expand not only with, with those groups, but, but with others, and we'd like to bring those types of folks to our town to take their marketing pictures and that kind of stuff. So, in summary, this kind of strengthens downtown as a retail and cultural destination, provides exclusive shopping for locals and visitors, attracts destination customers. Other things to think about, Sundance Film Festival will be coming to town. We expect this to be a very popular sought-after location for those types of folks. And then just last thing here is why here, why now? This is the perfect spot. This, this place is the perfect size. It's got the right ownership. J.D. is fantastic to work with. We've got a great, a great partnership we're building out there. But, also, it's central to the location, to downtown, and it's immediately available, which would be really great. And we've been hoping to get into a spot as quickly as possible. As you know, the holiday season is right, coming up very quickly. So, if we get approval tonight after the holding period, I think we can actually open for the day after Thanksgiving, which is, would be perfect timing to have a great launch and set us up for success in the new year. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time. Questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilmember Kern.
I just have one. Thanks. This just looked like fun. So, January a year from now, when Sundance comes, I'm assuming you guys will be open seven days a week and have extended hours?
Absolutely. We're going to do whatever it takes to attract Sundance to Louisville. Any other questions? Thank you, George. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Take a first round of public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? No? All right. Oop.
Sorry, I didn't sign up, but I will speak real quickly. Hi, my name is Taylor Carr, and I'm a Gun Barrel resident. I am a women's basketball assistant coach at CU, and I'm fortunate enough, our program has had, as mentioned in the slideshow, that a few of our athletes have already signed NIL partnerships with Colbert Hat Co. For them to have a storefront here in downtown Louisville would open up tremendous opportunities for not only our program, but our athletic department at CU, but also the entire student, student body, to be able to bring business here, bring foot traffic. And it's through conversations with my coaching colleagues at the university, this is something that we're very excited about for NIL activations within our athletic department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others? All right. Oop.
Hello. I'm Laura Schaefer, local resident of Louisville, realtor and cousins with George and Mike Land, and wearing a hat of Colbert Hat Company. And I'm here in support of my family and another family-owned business that I would like to see open in town. I think it's very important to have these family businesses here, and I think this is a great location near some other retail businesses, and I think what they have planned is great. I helped move them to town in 2019, and I only think they're going to add to the vibrancy here in town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last call. All right. We'll take it back to council for any questions, yeah, or comments, yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, first of all, really excited about the store, excited about the, the concept, and I have been able to see the tent at a couple locations and really cool stuff. And, you know, I know George and Mike Land have been in the community for only about five or six years, but have already made a pretty big imprint on a lot of people. So, really, really excited about their engagement in the downtown business world. And at the same time, none of that really matters, like, this is kind of crazy, this building obviously needs to be rezoned. Whether or not your business is great or not, like, this is great. I'm glad we're doing the work to get it done. It's a little, you know, a little silly that a building that's been commercial forever, we had to go through all these hoops, but it's part of keeping our community the way we want it to be. So, I understand that these steps had to be taken, and then we're here. I think it's a slam dunk, obvious, you know, great use of what is obviously a commercial building already, and keeping it such and letting a use like this go through is, I'm certainly in support of it and assume, assume most of us are, but I guess we're not supposed to do that, let everyone speak for themselves, but apologize for that. But, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm in, I'm in full support and appreciate staff for making, hopefully, quick work of this. I'm not sure how long it's actually taking in the background, but, but happy that we're here today to, to push it.
Councilmember Kern.
I'd like to move that we pass ordinance number 1908.
We need to take another round of public comment.
Oh, sorry.
B, yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I certainly agree with Councilmember Dickinson. I do have one question, though. So, you know, it makes total sense to do this rezoning for this property. I just want to ask about the language in the criterion for rezoning, and maybe you can help me a little bit. So, it says, right, "The area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area." So, it seems like what's changed is our zoning rather than the area itself, right? I mean, this building has been there since 1954, and not too much has changed around it, but we've changed all our zoning, and that has sort of led to this issue with now looking at this rezoning. So, it's kind of a minor point, but I'm just curious if, how you, how you view that interpretation of the language.
Start with that, yeah. So, I, so I think what changed was in 1954, when it was actually turned into a commercial use. Over time, it was limited. There was, you know, the city purposefully, purposefully limited the use, but it changed. And now, consistent with, I think, what the city wants to accomplish currently and consistent with how it's been operating. So I, so I think what changed was in 1954, when it was actually turned into a commercial use. Over time, it was limited, there was, you know, the city purposefully, purposefully limited the use, um, but it changed. And now, consistent with, I think, what the city wants to accomplish currently, and consistent with how it's been operating, um, you know, for what, 70 years, I think, you know, that's, that's what changed, is it was not developed as a residence, it was developed as a commercial use originally.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to bring up that issue. Thank you.
Anybody else for the moment? All right, why don't we go back to public comment, second round? No public comment? All right. Um, now you can, if you would like.
Thank you. I would like to recommend that we pass ordinance number 1908, series 2025, an ordinance rezoning Lot 1, Block 3, Jefferson Place subdivision from residential medium-density RM to community commercial CC Zone District.
Second.
Okay, and I'm gonna close that public hearing. We'll just pretend that that happened before the motion. Give me a second. Let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Congratulations. All righty. Get to work. All right. Next is ordinance number 1909, series 2025, an ordinance authorizing sale and conveyance of a city-owned property at 1016 Main Street. This is a first reading to set public hearing. We're going to be hearing from staff tonight about the ordinance. We're not going to be taking public comment on this one, uh, nor having a public hearing. Council can ask some questions, suggest amendments, or just instruct staff to come back with additional information. So can we have a staff report? Rob, just, just have patience with Rob, he's new to the city.
Apologies for that. I thought you were calling for a rider there. I had the agenda mixed up, apparently, myself. Yeah, I knew that, I was just testing you guys. Thank you. Sorry. It is here somewhere.
Oh, one, one thing we can do.
Here we go.
Okay.
Here we go.
All right.
I've got it. Thank you. So, yes, as you all know, this, um, you know, you've, the city council has entered into a contract to, um, uh, sell 1016 Main Street after purchasing it, and so by state law, you have to pass an ordinance. So we're in the process of landmarking this property. It's actually scheduled to come to, um, to city council on November 18th for the landmarking, and then we can proceed with the sale per the contract. So this is first reading on the ordinance to, and to set the public hearing and second reading for transfer of the property. You're welcome.
Very good.
That's an impressively concise report.
I move that ordinance number 1909, series 2025, pass in the first reading, and the public hearing be set for Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Own favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Rob. Uh, I'm, I'm actually gonna take just a moment, we're about at eight o'clock, and if we might, um, take our break right now, appreciate it, I want to take a time check with the rest of folks. Are we good to, after we come back from break, uh, hit the remainder of the agenda? Anybody have any concerns about that? All right. Um, we'll give you a little bit of, a few moments to.
8:05.
Let's get on with the next item. Our next item is Item D, which is Discussion Direction: City Managers' Proposed 2026 Operating in Capital Budget 2025 to 2030 Capital Improvement Plan in 2025 to 2030 Long-Term Financial Plan Public Hearing. It's advertised on October 12th, 2025, and we'll open the public hearing. Are there any disclosures of anybody that need to be put on the record? We're holding the public hearing for the budget this evening, but we won't be approving the proposed budget tonight. The final approval is scheduled for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2025. My understanding is that Director has a presentation for us.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor. I do have a brief presentation this evening. Mayor and esteemed City Council members, this evening you will be receiving a brief presentation of the City Managers' Proposed 2026 Budget. I would like to thank your council, the Finance Committee, our City Manager, department heads, and countless city staff in their efforts to get us to today's structurally balanced budget. The proposed 2026 budget is the result of significant work to date. This budget is structurally balanced. There have been no changes since the September 2nd City Managers' Recommended Budget Presentation. I would like to again highlight the following items to the 2026 Supplemental Budget: Market Pay Adjustments for our Police Department; joining Boulder County Office of Disaster Management; significant investments in technology, security, and process improvement; the Marshall Fire Building Permit Rebate Set Aside; and various community events. Again, this budget is structurally balanced. Significant work has got us to today. These bullets are the publicly-held meetings on the 2026 budget. In between these meetings, significant work and efforts were performed by your council, the committee, and city staff. Again, no changes from the September 2nd presentation. Our next and final step, as the mayor alluded to, will be on Monday, November 3rd, when staff will be requesting formal adoption of the 2026 Operating in Capital Budget and certification of our mill levies. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Council members have any questions tonight about the budget? Okay. If they don't have any, thank you very much, and thanks to staff and the Finance Committee for all the work that's gone into this so far. It's a huge amount of work. Oh, we got public comment. Thanks. Then, okay. Now we're closed. Um... Unless there's something else.
He has the next item as well.
Okay. All right, good. Now, I thought he was still working on his previous presentation. All right, the next item is Resolution Number 84, Series 2025: Resolution Amending the 2025 Budget by Amending Appropriations in General Fund, Parking Improvement Fund, Historic Preservation Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, and Golf Course Fund, and Adjusted Budgeted Revenue in the General Fund, Parking Improvement Fund, and Golf Course Fund. Do we have a staff presentation?
I can't get it back. The lecture.
Oh. Well, give a minute.
I will take it away. Thank you for that introduction, Mayor. Again, Mayor, council members, Ryder Bailey, Finance Director, this evening you'll be receiving a second, a presentation of our city's second budget amendment to our 2025 budget. This budget entry is largely administrative, adopting previously-approved council adjustments. Staff will be seeking your council's approval of the second budget amendment, again, largely administrative in nature, as most items were previously heard and approved by your council. Today's amendment can be broken into three pieces, three categories. The first: Previously-approved council adjustments to operating in capital projects since our last budget amendment on May 20th, found in Appendix A; some staff-recommended adjustments, Appendix B; adjustments to sources and revenues, Appendix C. Reminder that Resolution 84 is our official amending document and is presented at the fund level. The fund level is our city's legal level of budgetary control. The appendices to this resolution present detail line item, the greatest level of detail. Those have been included as part of today's materials. In aggregate, the proposed budget amendment increases our city's expenditure budget by about 4.2 million, offset by additional revenues of 252,000, for a net impact to all of our city funds of approximately 4.9 million. So, finance batches previously-approved council items throughout the year and since our May 20th item. This section of the budget amendment contains those adjustments. Further detail can be found on Appendix A. For example, just kind of going down this 5.2 million fund-by-fund, within the general fund was a purchase of a property, within 207 was the purchase, and the item before this was a sale of a property. The remainder are capital projects largely pulling 2026 budget ahead into 2025 budget. Staff is also proposing some appropriation adjustments for administration fees within the parking improvement fund and for pro-shop merchandise within the golf fund. Adjustments to our revenues or sources to the 2025 budget total 252,100. It's three different items. Within the general fund is a mental health co-responder grant award we're receiving, unanticipated parking in Lufi-outs, the Fund 206, and the offset of that golf entry I previously mentioned, the revenue for the merchandise sales. We have calculated the impacts of this budget amendment and confirm that all funds impacted will remain in full compliance of the city's reserve policies. At a high level and summarized by aggregate fund group type, this is data here. The City Council Finance Committee reviewed and supported approval of this amendment at their October 16th meeting. Staff's recommendation is for City Council to approve this proposed second amendment to the 2025 city budget as presented. I'd like to thank you for your time. I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? All right, why don't we take public comment? We have a public comment on that? All right, back to counsel for potentially a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 84, Series 2025: Resolution Amending the 2025 Budget by Amending Appropriations in the General Fund, Parking Improvement Fund, Historic Preservation Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, and Golf Course Fund, and Adjusting Budget Revenue in the General Fund, Parking Improvement Fund, and Golf Course Fund.
Second.
Thank you again to staff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item is a pair of ordinances. Ordinance Number 1904, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the ConocoPhillips Campus GDP Amendment Number 1. It's on for second reading and a public hearing. And ordinance Number 1905, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the Avista Adventist Hospital GDP Amendment Number 2, second reading. It's on for public hearing. Open the public hearing and ask for any disclosures by members of the council. Seeing none, do we have a staff presentation?
You do. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city, for now, I think. And I've been lacking some sleep, low flying airplanes over my house at 5:00 in the morning. It's pretty consistent, so I'm glad to hear.
That was covered earlier, sir.
I'm feeling a little more awake now, so thank you. Okay, so this is the second reading presentation. I'll go fairly quickly because we did a very detailed presentation with first reading. This is a pair of amendments to general development plans. One is for the Vista Adventist Hospital GDP and also for the ConocoPhillips Campus GDP, which is now Redtail Ridge. So Porter Care Adventist Health Systems has purchased a property within Redtail Ridge, so these GDP amendments are intended to facilitate the development of the new hospital campus within Redtail Ridge. There's three main amendments that are being proposed. One is to reduce development cap within the Vista Adventist Hospital GDP and similarly increase the same amount of development into the Redtail Ridge parcel, just for the hospital's parcel. They're also proposing to establish building height and massing standards within the ConocoPhillips General Development Plan for their parcel, and then also dedicate a seven-and-a-half-acre parcel for open space on the current hospital campus. So here are the details of bringing down the density within, this is the allowed density within the hospital campus GDP, and then adding density again to the Redtail Ridge parcel. They're reducing down to the existing development within the hospital campus. So they've counted the existing square footage. The existing GDP has a maximum, so they're removing any additional development. Of course, if one of those buildings at the hospital campus was torn down, then they could redevelop, but this wouldn't allow new development without removing existing development. So they're removing about 351,306 square feet from the hospital campus. They're adding 364,400 square feet to the Redtail Ridge development. That's about a 13,094-square-foot difference, so it's not exactly the same, but it's generally the same amount of development. The reason for that, working with the applicant, is to address any potential issues with traffic and utility impacts. The next part of the proposal is to, again, establish those building height and massing standards within their parcel in Redtail Ridge. There's three different height zones to allow three, four, and five-story buildings. The applicant will have a presentation this evening and have much more detail about this. But along with that, they are proposing massing and architectural standards to ensure that those larger building elements are appropriately designed, and the potential impact of any of that massing is mitigated through those design elements. So there's step-back requirements, the taller elements of the building are limited in scope, so it's 50 above 45 feet. The itty building elements above 45 feet could only be 50% of the base of the building in addition to the step-backs. So those taller elements will be smaller and stepped back and have articulation and different architectural requirements through the standards being established. From a height standard, staff also notes that this is on the lowest portion of Redtail Ridge and also set back quite a bit from U.S. 36. So here's, again, some of the images in the massing study provided by the applicant. Again, they'll go into more detail on that. The next part of their proposal is to dedicate to the city a seven-and-a-half-acre open-space parcel. This was noted on OSAB's priority list as a high priority. There's a larger parcel, it's about 15 acres noted on the OSAB list. This is half of that parcel. The applicant has requested that this parcel be limited to non-active open space so that it not include trails. This isn't being dedicated to meet any of our requirements. As you know, with subdivision plats and with planned unit developments, we do have requirements for dedicating open space. This is being dedicated, just in discussions with the applicant noting it was a priority parcel and the fact that they're removing development potential, that it was seen as really just donating it to the city in order to add to the open space based on the priority of the city in OSAB. Open Space Advisory Board did review this at a public hearing. They are recommending approval of accepting that open space dedication. They did ask for further discussion with the applicant before this hearing to see if trails could be added and different management to allow activity. We have met with the applicant since that hearing, and they can speak more to it in detail, but they are still requesting that there not be any activity or trails within the open space tracks. They are proposing to change the setbacks within the hospital campus because of this open space dedication. So the existing GDP's on the top, there's a 100-foot setback for three-story buildings from the north, 50-foot setback for two-story buildings, and then on that northwest side there's a 75-foot building setback. With that open space dedication, which you can see here as Lot B, that pushes any potential development quite a bit beyond those original setbacks, and so they are asking for a five-foot drive aisle or parking setback for any future development and a 20-foot building setback. So that'd be established on the GDP. So staff analysis, we are processing this as a GDP amendment. I won't go into any detail on this. We've provided our analysis in the staff report, but we're finding it's consistent with the standards for GDPs, GDP amendments in the Planned Community Zone District. And we also looked at the comprehensive plan. This is in the Phillips 66 Rural District. There are some policies about development within this area. So actually, both the hospital campus and Redtail Ridge are both in that district, and staff finds that the proposals are consistent with the standards in those districts. There was a question from Councilmember Cooperman at the first reading about the floor area requirement within the comprehensive plan, which, if, as applied to the Redtail Ridge development, it would allow potentially up to a little over 4 million square feet of development. So adding the development to this parcel in Redtail Ridge brings it up to about 2.9 million square feet, so they're within the comprehensive plan policy. We did do a traffic study to analyze the change in traffic. Again, part of the lowering the cap and adding to another area and kind of swapping those development rights was to mitigate traffic, but of course, traffic's going to be coming in different areas and from different areas, so we did analyze the traffic impacts. And the traffic study is recommending some long-term improvements, and perhaps there might be some short-term improvements. We're recommending that those be addressed when the hospital comes in for their PUD approval for their site development within Redtail Ridge. We looked at wastewater infrastructure, specifically the sewer lift station, knowing that that was built for a certain capacity. We have verified with Public Works that the new development potential within Redtail Ridge can be accommodated by the lift station and also the water and sewer infrastructure that's being installed right now in Redtail Ridge. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this as well. They're recommending approval. They also asked for further discussion on the open space to see if a trail could be added to that open space dedication area. So staff is recommending approval. We did add a second condition, which is noted here in staff's recommendation of approval for the ordinance on the GDP amendment. And it's that the, so there's an agreement for conveyance of the open space property. There's a draft of that agreement in your packet. We're still working out some of the details with the hospital on that agreement, so we're recommending a condition that we'll bring that back to City Council once all those final details are ironed out for action on just approving that agreement to transfer the property. And then we have our other condition about the traffic having any traffic requirements addressed through a development agreement at the time of PUD. So staff's recommending approval of both ordinances that would amend both of the GDPs that we've been discussing, and that concludes staff's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. One question, just a little bit sort of to clarify, I mean, so we're considering two ordinances at the same time. Would you say that fundamentally they are linked or they're not linked?
Yeah, I think they're linked, we're bringing them together because they function together in a lot of ways in the way staff's analyzing. I think technically they're probably, they stand on their own, but it is kind of one combined proposal, you know, to address potential issues for traffic and utilities like we spoke about.
Okay, that's fine. Then I had two questions about the open space. So one, I don't know, can you speak at all to how, you know, how that particular amount or of open space was chosen as opposed to something else?
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing for the applicant to answer as well in more detail from their perspective, but I think it was, you know, some of the issues that I'm aware of are that, you know, the parcel in the OSAB, the parcel in the OSAB priority map kind of includes this whole outline here, that's the 15 acres, and certainly this area is a parking lot, so we couldn't include that. That's the obvious one. I think there's some kind of the fringes of the hospital development encroaching into here that they didn't want to include it. And then for any future potential development, this would be a prime area where they could add future development, so they didn't want to lose that area.
Okay. And then just one other question. I don't know, when the city decides on a certain designation for a piece of open space, according to the categories in the charter, when or how do we usually decide on those, that categorization?
Right, so I think the city usually decides that in their management planning. I think the idea of designating it on the GDP, how it's managed, is to try to address the hospital's concern about activity within the open space, so by designating the category, it will ensure that it gets managed in the way where the city isn't adding a lot of activity. There's no trails, trailheads, and so forth going through that area.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do we have applicant presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We appreciate the opportunity to appear before you once again. My name is Mark Smith. I'm the CEO of Advent Health Avista Hospital. Our address is 100 Health Parkway, right here in Lewisville. I'm here tonight on behalf of Advent Health as a company and our Advent Health Avista Hospital to speak in support of these two ordinances. As you're well aware, we have recently purchased those 40 acres in the Redtail Ridge development. Our purpose in doing so is to build a replacement hospital for the existing Avista campus. Advent Health Avista is our longest continuously-operating hospital in the whole of Advent Health, out of all of our 56 hospitals, tracing our roots back to the Colorado Boulder Sanitarium, which opened 129 years ago in 1896. Since 1990, we have served Lewisville in the present location and done so during that time as its only acute care hospital. We've loved being part of this community in our current location, caring for its healthcare needs with excellence. Not surprising, however, in the space of 35 years, the needs of a community hospital Not surprising, however, in the space of 35 years, the needs of a community hospital can change. In order to better serve Lewisville and our surrounding communities, we need both a different location and a different building. We need better access for our patients. We need room to expand and grow. As we've talked about before at a very practical level, we saw the challenges that were posed by our current location during the Marshall Fire with only one way in and out of the hospital campus. In short, as we plan for our future, it's apparent to us that we need both a site and a structure that can meet the evolving healthcare needs of the communities that we're serving. Right now, in conjunction with our project team, we're in the schematic design stages of planning our future hospital there at Redtail Ridge. Our PUD submission, which we'll be submitting later this year in November, is where we'll certainly talk to and address comprehensive site plans, the site access floor plans, our elevations, number of other project specifics. We do, once again, want to acknowledge and emphasize that while the approval of our GDP is certainly a necessary step in this process, we fully recognize their design standards and city requirements that will need to be met in that PUD which we'll follow and that we intend to follow the proper channels and work with the city to demonstrate those project specifics. In closing, I'd like to thank the council for your consideration of these amendments. We really do believe that they represent the outcome of thoughtful and collaborative discussions with the city in how to serve our community well, but also allows the access and space that are needed for growth. I'm going to turn the podium over to the members of our planning and design team. They're going to introduce themselves again and take the council through our GDP plan for the hospital. And then they'll be available afterwards to answer your questions at the conclusion of their presentation and myself as well to take questions. Thank you.
Can she hook directly in or does she have to use? Yeah, I think you'll have to.
Use clicks.
Sorry. It's just because it's being broadcast. So there, you have to open up your file, open up your file and find her. You'll have to click on it. It's down. Oh, here we go.
Okay.
And then you have to push the button here.
Okay.
I'm Valerie Wilkins with Adams Management. We are the owners rep program managers for Advent Health for the hospital project. We have a few subject matter experts here with us from the project team to be able to address any questions you may have on our GDP amendments that we brought forward tonight. Introduce Afzana here.
Hi all, I'm Afzana McCuey. I'm a senior project manager and principal with Smith Group, representing the design team. I am not a resident of Lewisville.
Correct, I am not a resident of Lewisville either. Thank you. We took a couple of the comments that we've received over this process to make sure we've addressed those up, up front. So just some initial information before we move into some of the design specifics. Phase one of our Redtail Ridge development of the hospital parcel will include the hospital and one medical office building. We are currently working on our PUD submission. We plan to submit that middle of November. That will have all of our project specifics as we are now advancing into design development on the project. The density swap proposal, working through with Deputy Zuccaro, was to just limit the impacts of the traffic and the utility infrastructure side. So switch, swapping those limits over so that we're not making such an impact on the community. The traffic study was completed for the full development potential on the Redtail Ridge parcel. We do also have our traffic engineer here if there's any specific traffic questions for us, as well as our civil engineer for any utility questions. We're going to walk you through a few slides where we're going to review the building massing and height requirements for healthcare, why it's different and why we need a little bit more height on the building. The floor-to-floor heights are required to accommodate certain specialty medical equipment that happens above the ceiling and the connection space for that. The vertical structure also allows for faster rapid response times, decreased staff travel distances and adjacencies to support services to serve patients. It also preserves open space around the campus by not extending the horizontal building Few questions have come up on the open space dedication, so we wanted to address those now. Advent Health has been in Lewisville for many years, considers the city and community great partners. Combining this dedication of seven and a half acres with the previous 10-acre dedication creates a large area of undeveloped land in one of the high priority acquisition areas determined by OSAB. The proposed dedication creates additional buffer between the hospital and residential neighborhood, as well as prevents future development focusing on the city's open space priorities. The designation of preserved plan is to ensure the hospital's operation needs are met with focus on servicing patients. The Vista Campus is a secure medical campus that also includes behavioral health patients, and not all the buildings on the campus are owned by Advent Health. There are ground leases in place for the medical office buildings as well as centennial peaks. Additional public use of the open space may have an impact on patient care with more traffic, full parking lots, and patients being required to park farther away from medical services. We believe the plan as proposed represents a thoughtful balance between the city's open space priorities and the healthcare needs of the site, and we believe it reflects the collaborative discussions that have taken place to date. Advent Health deeply values our partnership with the city and remain committed to being a strong community partner and good neighbor. As the broader campus continues to develop, we welcome the opportunity to revisit these conversations to explore how we can collectively enhance the surrounding environment and support Lewisville's vision as a great place to live and work.
All right, so now we're going to step into some of the yard and bulk requirements that we are proposing on the GDP amendment. As Director Zuccaro alluded to, we will be talking through the setbacks that we have put into place to help break down the mass of a five-story building. We are requesting three different zones along our property, a five-story zone, a four-story zone and a three-story zone. That's to help limit the amount of sprawl and height on the overall campus, but also allow the hospital to operate functionally, both from a HVAC system as well as operationally for patient safety and staff efficiency. So in our yard and bulk requirements, we are showing here on the screen a possible mass. We call this the wedding cake stack. As you start to go up after 45 feet in height, you are, we are requiring a step back of 15 feet. Anything above 45 feet cannot be more than 50% of the building footprint itself. So we are starting to limit what is actually allowed to go vertical above the first three stories. And that continues on. So once you go above the next 40 feet, you would be required to have another 10-foot step back for your roof mechanical screening. Roof mechanical screening is very important for hospitals. We have a lot of air handling units that are serving the hospital. Roughly, just off the top of my head, we're looking at about 14 already for the size of a building. So we want to make sure that, that roof screen is incorporated into the overall design and aesthetic of the building and is not something that is an afterthought. By creating these setbacks, you are continuing to allow the breakdown of scale and mass, something that can be visually seen from Highway 36. It is important to have high visibility of the hospital, wayfinding experience, making sure that you can find where you're going to go in case of emergency. But as you approach the building and you get closer on campus, that building scale is starting to break down a bit, so it doesn't feel overwhelming and add to the anxiety of patients that visit these campuses. Here's an example of kind of the three different building heights we were looking at for the five-story, three-story and two-story, uh, five, four and three stories, ranging from 105 feet at the tallest down to 45 feet. I do want to note, previously on ConocoPhillips, they were allowing buildings up to 90 feet in height, and so we are just trying to go along with that GDP, original GDP, and apply it to our parcel.
I think it was 95 feet for Conoco's, and our current building right now is 84 for the actual building mass. And then our mechanical screen, as Afzana mentioned, is that delta of the building.
Thank you, Valerie. This is the view off of Northwest Parkway and Rock Crest. We are on the lowest point of Redtail Ridge development. As you can see from just that corner where that light currently is, where that Starbucks is, if you've driven past it, you can see how the scale of these buildings really start to kind of come down. And then what you don't see behind you is the amazing view that we have. I want to provide some samples of similar scale projects here, showing how that approachable scale is really taken on in various design elements with the use of your materiality, your masses, areas dictating where entry points are, and really starting to break down that scale as we continue through design. And as we are entering design development, we are utilizing a lot of these design elements on our facility. Some other similar scale hospitals around Colorado include the UC Health Highlands Ranch, Good Samaritan, not too far from here, St. Anthony North and their new tower that they recently have built, and then UCH Medical Center of the Rockies. When you look at Colorado hospitals, there is just a very small sampling of three-story hospitals because it really is not the modern day layout that works for hospitals. And of what you are seeing on the screen of the handful, one of them is actually the existing Vista Campus. Now let's talk about the mechanics of a hospital and why we have to go with such large floor-to floors. We range in floor-to-floor heights of 16 feet to 18 feet, and it really has to do with everything that you don't see. So for a patient room and an OR, there's a lot that goes on within the room, but there's a lot that you don't see above the ceilings. Above the ceilings, in order to have large beams to span column to column, so you are avoiding columns within operating rooms, within corridors, you have to have a large depth. So you're already starting to eat away about two feet of your plenum space above the ceiling. Now, once you start to eat away that two feet, you have large main ducts that are having to come across the ceilings that are served from those AHUs on the roof, down through shafts, and then dispersed horizontally across the floors. So as you get further away from the main point of the entry of these HVAC mains, those ductworks start to get smaller, but really towards the main area, they are quite large, can be up to four feet in diameter. On top of all of the HVAC system that has to be above there, in order to have proper infection prevention in ORs, we do incorporate a ceiling system. It's called an SLD system, where you are actually incorporating all of your lighting, your UV lighting and your proper air ventilation to push air away from the patient to prevent infection during surgery. All of that takes up additional space. You can see on that top right, there's a lot happening before you're even putting a ceiling in to the rooms. As Valerie said, currently in design, the top of our five stories is sitting at 84 feet. We're continuing to work through that and refine it, trying to pull down what we can. Everything above the 84 feet is, are those mechanical roof screens. Also, just to kind of emphasize, the staff efficiency and patient transport is highly important, that we are able to get dedicated elevators that transport patients from the ED directly to surgery and then into ICU and back and forth. When you have a horizontal sprawl, those are extra steps, extra seconds that really could affect saving a life. And so by being able to incorporate these dedicated elevators, we have certainty that we can get the patient where they need to as quickly as possible and save their life. Just to give you some context around the area, this is within a one and a half mile radius. We have several projects across the street from ours, though it's not technically on Lewisville. It is directly across, giving you the best site context. Overall, everything ranges from above five stories up to eight stories. Directly across from us is C, which is roughly 75 feet tall, is a multifamily housing unit.
And as mentioned, we have our civil engineer and our traffic engineer, if you would like them also to come up to address any questions.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll ask the questions and then you guys can provide the right person. Just do that as a 30B6. Anyway, we don't have enough lawyers in the audience, clearly. Do we have questions from councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
You made a comment with regard to the open space dedication about not wanting to have too many people coming to the site to access the open space. And I'm just curious, the existing site, you know, are there, are there restrictions on, you know, if you go to the hospital and park there, are you supposed to be using the hospital or do you not have any restrictions like that?
No, it's not restricted. The request from OSAB of having the trailheads be added in, that was the concern of drawing additional public to the site and having those folks on the site. But no, it is not restricted.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Kern.
Thanks for the detailed information. It's always interesting to, I think for the community member to understand how much has to go into technically into building such a magnificent new addition to Lewisville. I, I am curious about a couple of things that you, you show us the perspective of just, I mean, obviously it's just a massing, but what we would expect it to look like from actually Broomfield, not from Lewisville. So I'm curious if you can kind of maybe enlighten us, if you have anything, what the perspective might be from the Lewisville residents, because they're going to be coming in probably not from 36, but from the, the north and west side of town and utilizing the open space and being along campus drive.
Yeah, so the interesting thing about our parcel is that there's actually a large berm that we are not affecting, and that berm does end up screening a lot of the facility. We are looking at having that MOB, which is only three stories on the northern part of our property, to help give more of a residential scale before we step up into the hospital. So we have explored it not only from Broomfield, but from the surrounding Lewisville context and feel like the way that we are addressing this site helps break down and provide the proper views for the residents and then also the high density and operations that the hospital needs.
Great, thank you. And kind of getting back to the, the modernization of this and how technical it is, this hospital is 35 years old and really needs new, right? What kind of measures, if any, are being taken to make sure that in 35 years, this hospital can still maintain its high level of modernization?
The additional design parameters that we have in place now, code changes, the direction we're headed with, energy efficiencies, all of those items set us up for a long-term building now. We're expected to hit 60, 75 years on a, on a building asset now that could be even longer. So I think it's, that's the direction we're headed from a design and construction community at the current moment. I would say some of the infrastructure that the design team is also incorporating is setting us up for that future view as well. So there's a lot of elements incorporated that we know will last longer from a construction standpoint. Sustainability is a big component of the design right now.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks very much. We'll take public comment, or our first round of public comment.
Do you want me to leave the computer?
Pardon me?
Leave the computer.
You know, I, I think you can take that if you like. It's your computer, right? Thanks.
First up is Christian, followed by Jenny.
My name's Christian Dino, resident 967 Eldorado Lane. I'd like to voice my support for this proposal and encourage council towards approving it as proposed. I think that this development has overcome a lot of hurdles that have been placed in front of it, and it's, it's amazing that they're still interested in developing this land. And we need to really support a Vista, a resource to our community and our largest employer, and show them that, you know, we want them here and we're willing to do what it takes to provide them the necessary options to push forward with their facility. I'd also just remind council, you know, if, if we lose our largest employer, this will be the one thing that you're remembered for. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Next up is Jenny.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Lay. Good evening, council members. My name is Jenny Singer-Rupp, Louisville resident at 466 Muirfield Circle. I was raised on Kennedy Avenue in Louisville before the Davidson Mesa was designated open space and before Harper Lake was dug out of the ground, which probably really dates me, but I've been here for a while. After spending some time out of the country, my husband and I moved back, and for the past 11 years, we've been proud to call this community home while raising our children here. Just have some observations and thoughts that I see may not have been incorporated into the Avista plans, and wanted to share a few reflections as council gets introduced to the topic and moves through the process. First, I want to say that I really value Avista and our community as a great partner and employer. I was really excited to hear more about the details about their plans for the new site tonight. Really enjoyed that. First, I'd like to see city council discussing supporting the full acquisition or dedication of the 15.42-acre DD property as outlined by OSAB, rather than a partial dedication that would fragment the landscape. I'd also like to see Law 2 and Law 7 taken into consideration to be included in these plans. My thoughts are that the Schifoni open space should link with the Avista open space to create an open space corridor. It will also then tie into the Redtail Ridge open space. Preserving this land in its entirety is important, not only for ecological integrity, but also for how the community will be able to use and enjoy it in the future. And I think that Director Zaccaro's slides provide a map with details for reference. Second, I'd like to see this property classified as open space protected, not the suggested preserved. The open space protected classification would allow for passive recreation and meaningful trail connections. In particular, the opportunity to link the property to Schifoni open space and the US-36 bikeway would provide Monarch students and other residents with a safe and practical bike route through the 88th Street underpass. This would be an investment, not just in open space, but also in sustainable transportation and safe routes for our children going to and from Monarch that are in Superior. I don't think we need trailheads. That was mentioned. I don't think we need trailheads to accomplish that, though. By contrast, the owner-proposed open space preserved classification would prohibit trails and severely limit public access, and that would be a loss, above all, for commuting bikers, students, and families who depend on safe and connected routes to travel through town. In closing, I urge you to pursue the full acquisition of the DD property, to establish a binding agreement on development limits, and to classify the land as open space protected, to allow trails and safe connections for our community, and to link our open space lands. Thank you for your time, and thank you so much for your service to Louisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Do we have any additional? Okay, back to council.
Actually, I'm wondering if the applicant could say a few more words about the open space dedication and the, you know, in particular, you know, basically, you're forfeiting future development rights in this application, but also not dedicating some parcels that people have spoken about as potential open space. So I'm just curious if you could say a few things about that choice.
Sure. The request for the full parcel DD is not possible. There is partial development already on DD from the hospital, so we are not able to dedicate the full. And the section that's kind of, sorry, I don't have a map, but the square off to the eastern side, that is more considered the front door of also the campus, and that could be potential future development on the campus. So while the cap is going to be established, in theory, we can demolish buildings on the campus and rebuild. And so we're not looking to limit what future restrictions would be on the campus if we were to take that out. So we have a square foot limit, but we could put it in other spots than just where the existing hospital is.
Right. And how about in particular, the parcel to the south of the campus? I don't remember the number, but...
Yeah. At this time, Advent Health is not interested in dedicating additional parcels. It could be future conversations.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, and then Mayor Protem.
Yeah, so regarding the land dedication, this might actually be a question for you, Director Zaccaro. Above and beyond what's required by our charter, the 12%, is my understanding correct that you can't require additional land as part of a development conversation that's above and beyond what's required in our charter?
Right. So, yeah, within the city's municipal code, there's two provisions. One is in the, it's the 12% for commercial, 15% for residential when a property subdivides. So that's a public land dedication. It could be for open space, or it could be for any public-use land. It could be for schools, it could be for parks, it could be for a municipal facility, library, anything like that. That's the 12 and 15%. Within the planned unit development regulations, there's a separate provision for open space. So when somebody comes in for a planned unit development, we can request additional open space based on criteria within that part of the city ordinance. Other than that, there's no development code that would require dedication of open space or public lands.
Okay, thank you. So the land that's currently proposed being dedicated, which is above and beyond the requirements that we typically have, that's just at the decision of this particular developer. They could just not do it as well, right? But they're deciding to go above and beyond, just because they want to, basically.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. Again, you know, when we, it was a large discussion about all the parts of these applications, and staff presented this as a priority property for the city and requested consideration, and they agreed to it.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Representative Hamilton?
Yeah, I mean, I think I want to just briefly, you know, recognize how important Avista is and how excited we are. I think through this whole Redtail conversation, sort of in the background, it's like, gosh, I really hope that Avista ends up being part of Redtail, but we have had to make our decisions without that knowledge, right? And not for sure that that would actually happen, but I hope that it would. And so it's very exciting to be in these moments where, you know, we're really making real plans with Avista to really build things. And so I want to compliment both Avista and staff for some, what seems to me, some creativity of a density swap and figuring out how to, you know, do something smart in the new location, give up some space here. And the way I see it is like, well, we're giving up developable space here. What should we do with the land? How about we give it to the city as open space? Wouldn't that be cool? Or how about we ask for some, you know, space from them? So it just seems like kind of a cherry on the top for me of what is otherwise just a density swap and pretty close numbers. So I think it's incredibly reasonable. The whole thing's reasonable, and I think gaining that open space is fantastic. I do hear, you know, Jenny's request to, you know, have it be, from her perspective, a little bit more useful, a little bit more connected, a little bit, you know, a little bit more than it is. And I think that's awesome, and I'm not putting these words, but it's a little bit of like, bite in the hand that feeds you, but like, thank you for dedicating seven-and-a-half acres of open space. It'd be great if you could do more, but it's really cool what you're doing. And I think that's kind of how I hear it and feel it, is we always want more, and so do everything you can, but I'm satisfied with the current situation, I think, kind of the Professor Hamilton's, I don't know why that was coming out, Councilmember Hamilton's point. You know, I don't know that the requirement is really there, so I really, I'm evaluating kind of two separate things. I think the density swap makes sense to me, and then I think the dedication is great. And then the only, the last thing I'll say is, as far as heights and those things, you know, I think that makes sense. I appreciate the thoughtfulness of where the heights are. Again, this is a conversation from honestly six years ago about where taller buildings should and could be, and trying to be mindful of the topography in the area to plan that well, and then the massing and having an attractive building. And I certainly know that there's no way in which you build a rectangle and then call it good, right? That's just not, that's not what we do anymore. So excited to see what that looks like, and really a feather in the cap for Louisville when, you know, when you come into our town and you, the first thing you see on 470 is a beautiful new hospital, saving lives and doing really cool things. So I'm in full support of what's in front of us today.
Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. I just want to ditto everything that Councilmember Protem just said. He, okay, professor. He said everything that needed to be said very well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll agree with the Mayor Protem. You know, I think we've heard for a while now about the importance of this open space parcel. Certainly, we in Ward III have heard about it, and couldn't be more pleased to see it coming along for the ride on this, and appreciate all of what appears to be very hard work that went into figuring this out. I mean, the level of detail in the packet is astounding, and I'm glad that Rob and others are the ones who had to deal with it.
Did you, you raising your hand? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I also agree with Councilmember Dickinson. I do have one concern, though, which is about connectivity. So maybe staff can weigh in on this, you know. So, you know, if you are, you know, say, in the neighborhood north of the hospital, there is basically no way to walk or bike to the, I mean, no reasonable way to walk or bike to the US-36 bikeway. You know, there are not really any contiguous sidewalk connections. You know, if you're trying to bike, you could go over to the Monarch, but then you'd have to cross the intersection and so forth. So I'm just, I'm looking for, you know, some way to establish those connections, perhaps in connection with this application, or perhaps not, but I'm interested in whether or not staff or the applicant has any thoughts on that concern.
So I can pull up a map, but coming from the neighborhood to the north, there is a sidewalk on 88th Street that pretty immediately turns into an off-street trail, and then that connects through the open space to the south to a pedestrian bridge over US-36 onto the US-36 trail going west, or connects via an underpass under 88th Street going on the US-36 trail going east. So I think, right now, there is a connection. I would note that the city has plans in the comprehensive plan that we have now to connect a trail through the open space, but not the open space that's being dedicated. It's the open space immediately north of this, which would provide a more direct connection to the US-36 trail. So it is in the city's plans, but because we didn't own that, because we don't own this new dedicated open space, the plan was always to put it through the other open space parcel to the north.
Senator Mayor, if I could add to that. So Director Blackmore is participating in this meeting remotely, and his comment was that this will also be a component of the Trails Master Plan discussion.
So, just to clarify, so, you know, if you're coming from Superior at the south, there are some, there are some good connections. I guess, just, you know, if you're mostly concerned about coming from Louisville north of the hospital, so you're saying that there is contemplated a trail connection from the north to the US-36 bikeway on the west side of 88th?
So, north of the hospital, they had previously dedicated the 10-acre open space. So connecting 88th around the north down to the US-36 trail, that is contemplated in the comprehensive plan. And I think we have, I think in the staff memo, we have, maybe we don't have that. I think that was from OSAB. But, yeah, that is in the comprehensive plan to make that connection.
Okay. So the already-designated open space, we would be permitted to put a trail on that portion?
So, yes, we could put a trail on that portion. There's no restrictions on that portion. I would note, for clarity, though, that there is a, there is some difficulty getting all the way down to the US-36 trail to make that final piece of the connection.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, too. Okay. And is that difficulty, I mean, it looks like the parcel doesn't extend all the way to the, to the, to the trail there where the overpass is? Is that, is it because it's on private property, or would have to be?
So, you know, I don't know if Director Blackmore has more detail, because I think this was studied, but basically, the previous 10-acre open space parcel is contiguous to a C dot easement that's within the hospital's GDP area, and there is part of a trail connection there. I mean, I could bring up an image on this, but, yeah.
So Director Blackmore added, "We have a few alignment options that have been created in the past. The alignment is closer to homes, and it has to come up by the golf course to avoid this dedicated area."
That's helpful. Thank you.
Did you have another question?
No.
Okay. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any?
We need a second round of public comment.
Oh, I thought we had had a second round. Sorry. We've had, we've had a few second rounds. Any second round public comment?
No.
No? I didn't mean to discourage anybody. Any other comment from council? Okay, now I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion. First, motion to pass Ordinance Number 1904, Series 2025, and Ordinance approving ConocoPhillips Campus GDP Amendment Number 1.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Okay, let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to move passage from Ordinance Number 1905, Series 2025, and Ordinance approving the Avista Adventist Hospital GDP Amendment Number 2.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Our next matter is one that I think we have a statement from Councilmember Hefner to begin with.
Do you want to say what the matter is? Do you want me to say it?
It is the Concept Plan Review and Amendment to the ConocoPhillips General Development Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a professional conflict of interest on this one, so I'm going to excuse myself, and I won't be back. Good night, everyone.
Au revoir. All right. We have a staff presentation tonight, I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Matt Post, Senior Planner, Community Development. Fittingly, the item before you tonight is a concept plan consideration for an amendment, another amendment to the ConocoPhillips Campus GDP. As you are all aware, the concept plan is a process that allows an applicant to receive non-binding feedback from the city council and the general public before a formal land use application is submitted. Council is not required to provide specific feedback, and no consensus or majority vote will be taken. another amendment to the ConocoPhillips Campus GDP. As you are all aware, the concept plan is a process that allows an applicant to receive non-binding feedback from the City Council and the general public before a formal land use application is submitted. Council is not required to provide specific feedback, and no consensus or majority vote will be taken. All comments provided by the council to the applicant are advisory in nature, and no other boards or commissions have weighed in on this proposal, and staff have not performed a full and in-depth review of this concept plan, and we have not made a recommendation. We have, however, included a brief analysis for council's consideration and their deliberation. So this concept plan application requests consideration of an amendment to the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan to allow application of the industrial development design guidelines and standards to apply specifically to lots 1, 2, 3, and 5 of Block 1, which are shown, highlighted in red in the exhibit on your screen. The application of those industrial design standards would be instead of the currently applicable design standards, which would be the commercial development design standards and guidelines, which apply site-wide in Redtail Ridge or the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan. The exhibit on your screen shows, again, the proposed industrial design guideline applicability in red, the lots in blue, which would be the perimeter of Redtail Ridge, which the CDDSG or those commercial design guidelines would still apply. You can see the hospital parcel there on the east side as well. And then the parcels in green are what are currently dedicated as open space and/or detention and drainage areas. The total area of those four lots are just over 111 acres in size on this site. So council is well aware of the history on this particular property, but I'll just mention one item here, and that is, of course, the general development plan that's currently applicable was approved in 2010 when ConocoPhillips still owned the property. That allowed for 2.5 million square feet of development, defined land uses and setbacks, and importantly, in this scenario, applied, or rather mandated, that any development on the property abide by the commercial development design standards and guidelines. And then, of course, the final plot was approved in 2024, which is the base for the request of the parcels that would be affected in this particular amendment. So the properties own plan, community's own district commercial, so those commercial design guidelines would apply under the current zoning designation that is attached to the GDP. And as you know, the site is subject to those design standards. The commercial design standards are meant to ensure that commercial projects in Louisville -- this is kind of a summary of the commercial design standards, but that those projects are high-quality, long-lasting, and fit well within their surroundings. They help protect the community's character and quality of life by setting clear expectations for building site and landscaping design. And the goal of those standards is to encourage attractive, durable projects and developments that add value to the city and discourage designs or materials that feel out of place or may be of lower quality. So we'll generally see more variation in materials, more variation in roof forms, additional fenestration, which would be windows, so on and so forth. So commercial uses, retail environments, office environments, more pedestrian way environments when you would consider those commercial details and uses. So on the screen here, I've provided a couple renderings, or a few renderings, rather, of what types of development we would see with our commercial development design standards. The upper-left rendering is the building that was most recently occupied by specialized on the north side of the CTC. That area is actually subject, although it is in the CTC, that area actually has a GDP, and that is subject to the commercial design standards and guidelines. So you can see some building articulation there, variation in roof form, additional fenestration, and then obviously, unique application of a facade material. The other two renderings are actually renderings that are provided by the applicant, and these are currently under review by staff. And these, those two renderings are on the Redtail Ridge site, PUD number five, and they do meet the commercial design standards and guidelines. So the upper-right building is an amenity building that is proposed, and Redtail Ridge, again, these are currently under staff review. These haven't been presented to the council yet, but this is just an example of what the commercial -- but it is, they are formally submitted to the city. But it is an example of what the commercial, the application of the commercial design guidelines would look like on some parcels on Redtail Ridge. So the upper-right is an amended building, and that lower, a snippet of a rendering in that lower portion is actually a life sciences building. I'll let the applicant speak a little more to that. The industrial guidelines, by contrast, are generally more flexible and permissive than the commercial design guidelines because they serve different purposes and reflect, obviously, those distinct land use characteristics in the districts in which they apply. As you know, as mentioned, commercial areas are typically designed to serve the public realm. They emphasize visibility, pedestrian activity, and architectural character. And so commercial standards are generally more stringent to ensure the development contributes to the aesthetic quality of the community. And those commercial design standards not only apply to just buildings, but they are site-wide design standards, landscaping, plazas, parking lot configurations, things of that nature. So there are a comprehensive set of guidelines that we apply property line to property line when we're considering those in an application. The industrial guidelines, again, by contrast, are generally intended for employment-based uses, the focus on function, efficiency, and flexibility. These, our industrial standards would generally accommodate larger, typically rectangular buildings that support loading areas, outdoor storage, all features that are generally required to support interior operations of a building. And then, again, the function over form is generally kind of the takeaway from the industrial standards. Applying the industrial guidelines instead of the commercial standards would result in a noticeable shift in how future developments look and feel in the affected area. I think the biggest takeaway that council needs to be aware of is that the industrial design guidelines will allow for tilt-up concrete product, which is the type of development pattern, or the development pattern, rather, that we see within CTC, what we would see of a general industrial park. And so I provided just some additional photos here. These are currently buildings that are in the CTC that are subject to the industrial design standards and guidelines. So these buildings met our industrial design standards. The building on the top is 769 CTC Boulevard, a recently built building, currently being taken over by Rivian for auto sales and service. But this is directly adjacent to Dillon Road, and that is the elevation that's visible from Dillon Road. The rendering, or I'm sorry, the picture on the south is part of the Eli Lilly Lenovo campus, and so that's what those buildings would look like. And that's an example of facades that would beat our industrial development design standards. I'm showing these renderings. I think the applicant has, will, they'll present tonight, and I think they have a rendering package that they'll present. And so I just want to be clear that when we are reviewing if the industrial design standards were adopted and we were administering those standards, this is an example of a product type that would be permitted under those design guidelines. And so, obviously, as council is aware, staff has not provided a formal opinion on this. We just wanted to provide an in-depth analysis so that you all are able to make an informed decision and/or provide informed feedback to the applicant. Following this concept plan hearing, the applicant may choose to pursue another GDP amendment of the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan. It would apply only to those interior parcels that were shown previously, and I'll bring that up just for an example. Again, these would be the interior parcels where the industrial development design standards would apply. Once that GDP amendment, obviously, assuming this moves forward, once the GDP amendment will be approved, then a PUD application would be subject to any changes on that GDP. So, again, staff have now provided a recommendation, and as you all are aware, you may provide non-binding advisory feedback to the applicant. So the applicant does have a presentation this evening, and they have some more detail to provide with you on what their overall program would look like. And without them, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can we ask questions? We'll have some questions for you. Go ahead, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt, for this. So I'm curious, in the packet on page 11, is sort of a layout of what the, it looks like the anticipated piece, it says PUD diagram, and it indicates, is, would that still be part of what, I mean, I guess we can wait for their concept, is to see where they would lie when they talk about interior and how they're setback? But is it possible for us to not do an all-of-one thing and all of another? Is it possible for us to combine industrial and commercial requirements?
You know, I think I'll let you deliberate on that. That would be, it would potentially be a challenge from staff. You know, I think there would, you know, you would, I think there's probably room for discussion on, it sounds like a hybrid approach is kind of what you're considering there.
Yeah, like more examples, so like the outward-facing, the things that are going to be to a road where people are going to be driving on, or to a park that people are going to see would have like a commercial appeal. So it's, instead of just specifically saying, you know, like 25% commercial, 75 industrial, it would be clear as to where that would need to be?
Yeah, I think, I think that the, you know, in my development review mind, I think of how we would administer that, I think the simplest way to administer that would be a decision that indicates that any facade facing a right-of-way, a public right-of-way, right, would likely have to abide by commercial standards. You know, I'm just, again, thinking of a challenge in administration and how we would actually administer that, but that would be maybe one example of how you would apply that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. Along that same vein, on page, it says six of eight, which is page 734 in the entire packet, there's a rendering from the applicant of what a potential industrial design could look like. When I compare that rendering to some of the examples that you provided earlier, the rendering seems to have more windows, some more different changes to the facade. So is that typically what we think of in our code as an industrial design, or is that almost like industrial plus?
Yeah, I would.
And we could require, if we were to approve this, we could say, yeah, less of a hybrid, but more of like an industrial plus type of thing?
I would, I would.
Understand, because like, they provide renderings, and this is not what we require?
Yeah.
And we, I hear that the mayor is not happy with his sign with my questions. But my question is, you know, if we approve this, and what I'm seeing here is their rendering of industrial is not what's in our code for industrial, then it almost feels like a bait and switch. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding what they're showing us is what we can expect.
Oh, yeah. I would say that what the applicant's presented there is part of one of their PUD applications that they've presented to staff so far, and there are portions of that building that I would say are of an enhanced industrial design. And again, I'll let the applicant speak more to this in this particular area, but what you're seeing there is a corner rendering of a 600 linear foot building. So I would say that that section is, is, would, you know, if we were to look at that one corner rendering, again, enhanced industrial, and I would say there are portions of that that would absolutely satisfy our commercial design standards and guidelines. However, when we look at the entire length of a 600 linear foot building and we see, you know, limited variation or limited articulation in the overall facade, right, a boxy-like structure, those particular items are specifically called out as not desirable development patterns in our commercial guidelines and standards.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add a little bit to that. So within the Colorado Tech Center, we have a range of design that meets the industrial standards, and some choose to add enhancements to design and add more windows. I think the photos that Planner Post showed were, you know, some of the most basic industrial designs, but they're very common as well. So I think the important thing to remember is that if this is rezoned through the GDP amendment to allow straight industrial design standards, you know, we hope that this development team develops the property with the designs that they are, but they could also sell it. And the zoning just runs with the land. So I think that gets to some of the hybrid-type discussions that if you're not comfortable. So we wanted to just really make sure that if you go with the straight industrial standards, that's a possibility. If you're not comfortable with that and you also don't want to do the commercial, another possibility is to do some type of hybrid, and we wouldn't figure that out tonight, but if that's your preference, we'd go away and try to come up with measurable standards about the amount of material enhancements and articulation that would be above and beyond the base industrial standards.
I'll just add, too. Thank you for clarifying, Director Zakaria. I did show those examples of industrial guidelines just as what could be built. That was in no way presented by the applicant, right? So I think the applicant has, again, a program in mind. We just wanted to be sure that under the design guidelines, if one of those properties were to sell, that a product like that could be built there.
Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Counsel comments? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
So in the CTC, there's some buildings that, I don't know what the right terminology is, but, you know, basically look like they're built from composite blocks, essentially. And I assume those are industrial-type buildings? Is that?
Yeah, I would say that you're referring to like split-face CMU builds, and they're generally a rectangular block form with mortar in between. Is that what you're referring to?
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah. So that would be, yeah. So I think that, you know, I would say that some of those build probably followed market trends at the times that those actually went vertical. And so, but those builds would satisfy industrial design guidelines, and there are even some, some of those would actually even satisfy our commercial design standards now. I can let the development team speak on kind of the cost between what is now the more common tilt-up construction style versus that CMU construction that I think you're referring to, counselor.
And then, you mentioned durability, both when you talk about the commercial and the industrial guidelines. Do you feel like there's any significant difference in the durability of the materials that would be used in one or the other?
Yeah, no, I wouldn't. I wouldn't say that there's, I guess, when I refer to the term durability, I think that when we're considering, again, a tilt-up industrial product, I think the idea is for low-maintenance, durable facades, right, with, again, function over form, when compared to our commercial design guidelines. But I don't think that there's any significant, any significant risk of a less durable product out of those two, so.
Okay. And then lastly, you know, you were saying that the guidelines, of course, also refer to things exterior to the buildings. And so are there differences between requirements for pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, and what are those?
There are, yeah. There's more comprehensive requirements for pedestrian connections in our commercial design standards, to be clear. There's, there are requirements, again, through parking lots, there are parking lot configurations, all that are interrelated to overall site maneuverability and site circulation. There are still some standards in the industrial design guidelines, but the commercial design guidelines are more comprehensive because, again, those commercial uses are supposed to address the public realm and be more public-facing, come-and-go type of commercial uses.
Okay.
Different landscape standards as well, different open space standards, we have different streetscaping standards. There's quite a few things in there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Why don't we have the applicant make their presentation, tell us what they're thinking about.
Two-screen thing going on here. Is it there? Is it there? No, it's not. I guess there you go. There you go. Now we got to get this going. I got to go to this other screen. Here we go. It's like, okay, cool, there you go.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the time tonight. My name is Evan Peston, and as I'm sure you know, I'm with Sterling Bay. I'm not a Louisville resident, if I'm supposed to say that. But just want to start off again by thanking you guys for having us here tonight. Really excited to be here, just presenting our council plan review for allowing industrial design standards at specific areas of our site, as Matt had mentioned. Before we begin, though, I do want to clarify, we're not proposing any changes to the plans for the site that we've previously presented to council. Our vision remains the same. We're still here focusing on attracting the innovative companies, life sciences, aerospace and defense, technology groups, like that hasn't changed. The project continues to be developed as the same innovation district that we presented at council meetings in the past. The purpose of tonight's discussion is to address a few inconsistencies that we've encountered between the GD-
encountered between the GDP's permitted use and the applicable design standards. So that's what we're going to walk through tonight, and how those conflicts impact our ability to deliver the facilities that our target tenants and companies require. So with that, so real quick, I know Matt had kind of gone through all of this in more detail, I guess, just really fast, though. So again, we're, in the red outline right there is where we're proposing to have the industrial standards change from the commercial design guidelines. There's a lot of reasons for that. I mean, number one, I think it's, we wanted to keep it to the interior of the site while maintaining the exterior buildings, like the life science building that Matt had shown, the amenity building, similar buildings like that that'll accommodate the commercial design guidelines and in the blue areas and kind of also, I mean, the hospital is going to be blocking these as well from plain sight view. And this also is one of, this is, I know the hospital is also a low end too, but we're both kind of on a lower end of the site. So like PUD eight and PUD three are by far the highest pieces of our site. And I mean, I think it's, it's like kind of also important to note, like if you go up to the top left of our site, kind of where the campus is, and you go down to the very, very bottom right at the PUD five, there's like over 100-foot elevation drop. So we're, we're keeping this on the kind of like the lower end of our site in totality as it relates to, you know, the other PUDs that we have planned and even the, the high And then before, I handed off to kind of the development and design experts to kind of walk you through in more detail, the, the differences between the industrial standards and the commercial standards. Just want to quickly recap, like, so these are what we're talking about today of the issues that we're encountering as far as the design that we need to build for specific tenants. So it's, it's, it's the research and development and manufacturing and fabrication, that's all like geared heavily towards life science tenants specifically. Also, there are space and defense groups, you know, like the Lockheed Martins, like all of those groups, everything like that, which the, we've talked about the CTC this after, this, this evening, and the CTC is just littered with those groups. A lot of those groups are looking to expand, and we've been in discussions with a lot of these groups. And so we've done test fits and trying to figure out which best fits their, their plan and what they need to build to accommodate building, if some people are building like spaceship parts, right? And so there's specific standards and guidelines that they have to meet from a building perspective to be able to accommodate that and to be, I guess, serviced to do that or allowed to do that. And so that's kind of like the main reason we're here today and wanting to at least change the industrial standards for the interior of the site where these larger buildings will be. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Marshall to kind of dive into some more of the details.
Council, thanks for hearing us out. My name is Marshall Wheel, Director of Development for Sterling Bay. We're seeing the Redtail site. And as Evan mentioned, the screenshot you see up here is a section of the ConocoPhillips GDP permit allowable uses, like he showed, manufacturing, fabrication, processing, warehouses and, and storage facilities. So as an approved use on the site for those types of programs, our users are going to go look for those types of, you know, rectangular types of buildings. And one of the fundamental issues we're having in the commercial standard design guideline is in the architectural section, so much the site, I think we have a master campus plan, so there's trails on site, everything's all interconnected, it's, we're just focused on the architectural elements. And this, this diagram in particular shows on the, on the top left side with the shape says undesirable architectural treatment, and it shows rectangle building, right? Don't do a rectangle building. And then it steps up to the next as vertical articulation added, and then we got some horizontal and vertical articulation added, and then we have a gabled roof with lots of articulation, more of a downtown shopping center kind of feel. So it's, it, it creates some difficulties when we're going out to these manufacturing, research, life science companies when they're looking for spaces like this, because it fits their program needs, it fits their efficiency, they have certain bay depths that they need to meet to keep their labs running really efficiently. And to get kind of into where we are right now on, on PUD one, one of our renderings for our site, so Sterling Bay is a very design-forward company, we're not trying to put out vanilla tilt-up storage facilities, FedEx, Amazon-type distribution warehouse facilities. We came with, we came within its time, we came well thought out on, this is the look and feel we wanted for this space. It definitely is above the, the industrial design design standard in terms of, we're not putting up concrete tilt-up buildings, we felt we went above and beyond that. And so this is the first renderings we're seeing, and we want the industrial campus to, to match this in a way. So we have articulation at the canopies, there's form liner panels, wood look form liner panels, there's a metal canopy overhang at the front entrance doors, and form liner panels along there. There is definitely some tilt-up concrete, painted tilt-up concrete within this. Some, you know, you just saw these pictures, but right down the road, probably our biggest competition, 700 Tech Center Court, Charlotte's Web is in there, process manufacturing company, Emoji Biopharma, GMP and R&amp;D facility right next door, and then you have Loxo or Lucky or Lilly subsidiary company, which is, you know, one of the biggest life science companies in the world. So these are the types of buildings they need. They need high bays. They sometimes have catwalks up above their entire labs so they can switch out filters and, and make sure their GMP facilities are running correctly, because nothing can go down. So there's high requirements and just efficiency requirements for the rectangular shape and, and bay depth. Going back to our design, and you get a little bit more of a picture of the run down the side of the building, you could see the different material types we're using for this one or recommending to use. You have some tilt-up concrete panels, the, again, canopy overhangs, the wood look form liner panels and, and lots of glass. I will, I will totally honest with you, some of these life science manufacturing, aerospace companies do not want a whole bunch of glass looking in their private labs, some of it's top secret. This is our intent, not all of them want that, it's very few, but I would, just to be totally honest with you, some of them would come back and in their lab portion only want to cover some of that up or just black out the glass. And then for these final two slides, I just want to call, this is, this is kind of going into the hybrid discussion versus, and all industrial standard versus commercial design line standard and how it's been reviewing, right, through the plans. And so I know this looks like a busy spreadsheet, but it is, the commercial design guideline standards on your left, very hard to see, sorry. And then we have the PUD one submission that we just showed you, the renderings of the PUD one submission is in the checklist, the yeses and nos. And then we have the industrial design guideline standards on the right, and the industrial design guideline standard checklist, and then we have an industrial design guideline enhanced version of where we think we went above and beyond the industrial standard. If there's a blank in any of those, that is not listed in the industrial design, or is not listed in the design standard within the cities. So I took everything in the architectural sections, put it on a spreadsheet so you could see the comparison. And one area, and sorry, it's really hard to see, one area that has been the biggest point of difficulty to get through is there are many instances within both of these codes where it says the same exact thing, and some of them are, are major and some of them are minor. This particular one, the variance in facade elements, and talking about color variations and architecture variations, is the same in both codes. So it's hard to decipher exactly what articulation we need to meet, and that's why the hybrid design review has been difficult to get, to get through, to say, hey, we're guessing, it's opinions, and it's, it's probably difficult for city staff to, to review that in the same I think the major parts within our, what we've presented is we're not going to meet the roof details of the gabled roofs, right? That, that's something that we couldn't deliver as part of a life science program. They're not going to want gabled roofs up on top of the roofs, there's tons of MEP equipment, it's structurally reinforced. Been doing, I've been in life science, life science industry for 20 years and have never, never had a gabled roof on a building. Second page, you can see more, but really this is, is breaking it out into building height, building materials, roof, roof framing details, more materials and color palettes, and building entrances. And right, this is, this is our opinion on the codes, but the difference in them and kind of what we had put out there as our rendering for PUD one and PUD two and PUD That'll conclude. Any questions?
Any further presentation?
Nope.
I don't mean to, I don't want to interrupt you here, looked like you were finished, but yeah, we can take some council questions, who probably will have questions for one or both of you. Yeah, Mayor Pretten.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I feel like, you know, the, I think the piece that I'm, that I'm hearing, right, is we're allowing industrial use and then not allowing industrial buildings. So we want a life science building, or we want, you know, aerospace building, but then we want them to meet a building code that doesn't really work for those uses. So I, I hear that, that issue. I think when, when I was, you know, hearing about the potential to change the design guidelines, industrial, my, I think it was the entire Redtail area, and for me, one of the first, I'm like, it'd be great if like maybe the edges weren't like that, maybe if it was just in the middle. So this satisfies that piece for me just intuitively, that, that some of the more basic-looking buildings are interior to the, to the whole development. And so as you drive by it, drive around it, you're, you're keeping that commercial code, and as you get into it, and the only reason you're getting into it for most people is because they work there or they're, you know, they're, it's not, it's not like for visiting, like, you know, we're not, we're not shopping there. So I have less concern about the interior being more industrial-looking, but I think to the point of the larger conversation is, they can show us, this is concept plan review, they can show us whatever picture they want, they can show us a picture of a mansion and be like, we'll probably build it like this. And, and to Planner Post's point, we have to be very careful of what, once we approve, you know, industrial standards, they're in no way, shape, or form required to build anything they've shown us today. So it's not about a trust thing or anything, it's just, I like, I like the examples if, if they ended up selling it, and right, it's just not you anymore, and, and we'll have to own that. So I think there's some, some appetite for me, maybe not a ton, but I think there's some appetite for me for something that's really simple, very clear, easy to apply, easy to follow enhancement, whether that's, you know, 25% of the facade must have X, right? Like, I'm sorry, I'm going to leave that to you guys, but, you know, that it, the building is still relatively usable, it has flat roof, those kind of things, but like, can it, can we have some of the designs you put in your concept? Yes, you have to do some of that. And so the have to do some of that, I think is where it gets complicated, and what I don't want certainly to do from the DIAS or at any point in this process is tell you how to make that rule. But with your guys' expertise, if there is a simple way you can make a rule that will ensure if they sell it to someone else, that we've done, as Councilmember Hamilton said, you know, industrial plus, it's, it's a little bit more of a, an upgrade to the industrial, but not like, you know, nicer, something really specific that, that you can hold people to. But in other words, I think it's all pretty reasonable, and I am specifically very, very excited about, you know, Redtail being an extension of CTC in the aerospace, life sciences, I mean, hub of the state. We have a really great opportunity to, to continue that reputation in Louisville, especially with aerospace, and so I don't, I want to make that possible without, without getting ugly, terrible buildings, and I, I think we're all on the same page there. That's.
I think clarity is probably the most important thing, especially for these tenants. Like, I don't know if you guys were aware, but Novartis was looking at Redtail, it's one of the biggest life science companies in the world. They ended up choosing North Carolina because of just kind of the ambiguity with, yeah, there you go, thanks, for like the design standards and like, they, they assess that, hey, it's going to take us two or three months longer to get through a building permit process in Colorado versus North Carolina, and each month is like $50 million. So they were like, yeah, we're not going there, we're going to North Carolina. And Colorado always ends up like on the finalist list for all these groups, it's just a small thing like that is like, they just, they don't like to deal with that. Like, they need certainty.
To clarify as well, along with this chart, so the PUD two, everything in blue that you see on the outside, right, that's our life science buildings, it's steel, steel-framed building, two-story, glass, glazing, it's not tilt-up concrete type of building. PUD eight, obviously you, you're never going to be able to see in the campus from 36, you got the highway right there, 88th Street as well, there's a big berm, and then you have PUD three is a, is a really beautiful building. And hospital obviously blocks everything from Northwest Parkway, and PUD five would block most of the views from 36, you'd just get a little view driving by, just to clarify that.
It appears to me that the north side of PUD two arena, right, is the most potentially exposed, and like, I can imagine us wanting like, hey, the north side of PUD two needs to have some, you know, facade improvements.
Yeah, and we also have, there's, there's like ponds, and, I mean, we also have the requirement per our plat that we have, I always forget the number, like 3,500 trees we have to plant. So we can always plant trees, and it's like, that's what we're planting on, planting them in specific areas where it like can make this feel better.
Yeah, the, the scale of this drawing doesn't do it justice, I would say, we're on site, out on site today and just seeing the ponds and the size of those ponds off a, giving that buffer off campus drive is, is, is pretty cool. So I do, and, and that corridor on the north side of PUD two, it's, it's pretty blank space over there and, and open space, but I got, driving by, you'd see it, so.
Other council members? Yep, Councilmember Current.
Thanks. Thank you, actually, just for, for bringing and coming. So just to give you guys an opportunity, what are the kind of cost ramifications? What are, what are some of those reasons that you're wanting to bring this to us?
I mean, there, there's costs to it, but it's not the main reason. I think the cost discussion is for everyone and the success of the project. I would tell you, most of those concrete tilt-up buildings, you can build something for 82 bucks a square foot, and you build something like a super enhanced one, maybe with that gable roof design you had, or 130-plus. We've priced out some of them, we've seen some of the pricing around here, and you get to a point where Lilly is looking at CTC, and they're going to go there every time because they don't care about the look, right? But we wanted to grow an enhanced design, we don't want this vanilla tilt-up building. So when you price yourself out of the market, they're not even going to come and look at your building, there's not a huge, there's not this huge price gap like, like an office building. If you want a spectacular office, you can go buy it, or if you want a lower-end office, you can go find that too.
Yeah, so costs are 30, 40% higher, it's 30, 40% higher for them to lease space there too. And so they'll just go to room build.
Okay. One of the things that I was looking at was not just the outward campus facing, but the hospital lot, and the fact that there's going to be an awful lot of activity, people around, driving around, driving on, sorry, I have to tilt my glasses down, Sorrel Avenue. And, and my worry is people who are in the hospital and they're looking out those windows, for them to have an industrial-looking thing out that window and for staff and environment, it's not, I think, what was ideally presented to us. I should press all of this, I'm very excited about everything coming in here. I probably should have started the same way. I don't want to sound negative Nellie, and I've seen projects that Sterling Bay has done, you guys presented a lot of them to us in the past, and, and they really do look incredible. And this is the, like, the crown jewel industrial piece of Louisville that's left. And I think our expectation, our hope from our community members is that this will have the feel of those really incredible Sterling Bay projects that we've seen. My worry is if we allow a flat roof with industrial components on the top of it, and it's lack, I mean, I understand some of the confidentiality things in some of these spaces, but is there a way to have the portions that we really are going to be interacting with and seeing? and seeing have that really great, more contemporary, more interesting, more commercial, I guess, appeal? And because I'm looking at like PUD 1, for example, and I can see there's a whole building right in the middle. You could probably make that a tan box. But, but, yes, you could probably make it a tan box. And the only people who are gonna know are the trucks that are driving in and out, right? So that would probably be the company that wants the single most industrial, hardcore industrial usage. I recommend that building. And that's where I'm talking about like a hybrid. You know, is there a way for us to say, look, here's this piece that looks really great. That's where your offices are gonna be. And then everything else is where it drives in. I'm really just concerned about how this will look and feel, not just from outside, but inside where the people are, like I said, with the hospital. And then the second piece would be the, Matt, you mentioned there's a change in the landscaping standards? If we change the standard from commercial to industrial?
I don't know that it's necessarily significant in these particular PUDs that they would have here. There's, yeah, I was just giving an example of how the guidelines change. But I mean, from an open space perspective, based on their original PUDs, or based on PUD 1 that we've reviewed so far, under CDDESG standards, they were in conformance with those landscape and open space requirements, so.
And I think if we came in and just did one building right next to the hospital, and it was just one thing, yeah, we're not providing a whole tremendous amount of landscaping detail, but the fact there's three miles of trails around the whole site and a bunch of open space given back, it's a little bit different of a situation, I think, for us on that, to answer that question. There's lots of room, lots of space. And although this looks like big buildings and condensed, when you're out on site, I mean, this is 450 acres. It's massive. There's a ton of room in between. And I don't think there's any, we will, we always put up roof screens, and we always look at sightlines and make sure that we're covering equipment. But I don't know that there's anything we're gonna be able to do from the top view of the hospital, ever, to be able to screen that, no matter what we put up, if ours are only two stories.
It's probably over 1,000 feet, like, from that building that you're talking about, to where the hospital would be. It's probably well over that. It's hard to tell, like, when you're looking at this. But then again, too, also to Marshall's point, on the bottom right edge of that, so like, obviously, like, the main entrance of our site is, you know, coming in off of the Northwest Parkway. Like, that's gonna be one of the main entrances. So obviously, we'll have like a life science building there that we're already in the PUD with. That's also where we have a huge park, with a ton of trails there too. So that's like a, kind of a buffer of what we think as well. We'll help with that.
At least, I mean, to the best of our ability, there's little sanctuaries on either side of the hospital, even though on PUD 1, it's highlighted fully in red. If you look to the right, like Evan was pointing out, there's a large park there.
In the north, that northeast portion of PUD 1?
See if I can, does that work? No.
Oh, right, yeah, that's what I could see. I was looking at the building above that, too.
The hospital, obviously, like, they're gonna be coming in here. And I think they're asking for an interior, and then also.
Can I do that? There you go.
Yes, the main entrance that they're gonna be coming in off of, I mean, they're asking for an additional, and they might be asking for an additional spot there. And if they go up the roundabout, like, that's kind of like where their other entrances will be. So they'll be passing like that part.
This is, yeah, this is also open space, pond area.
Yep, so do you see those two buildings there on that east side? Like, the west side of Sorrel?
Yep.
That's where I kind of talk about this hybrid. Like, how do you make that east side of those two buildings, right, be appealing? Because there's actually gonna be a lot of Louisville residents who come through campus and then come down Sorrel to get to the hospital. We actually don't, none of us live by that main entrance. We're all at the exact opposite side. So, and I'm a Louisville council member, and I represent the people on the west and northwest side of town. And I'm really trying to vocalize their concerns as well. That's my responsibility, just so you're aware. And so that's why I'm looking at this more holistically, too, from where our people are gonna be seeing and interacting, driving, riding their bikes, you know, to get to things. And that's a concern for me, I'll be honest with you, that if we can't assure that it's the industrial plus or some kind of a hybrid component, that Vista is going to, and the residents aren't gonna feel as happy with this, and they're gonna feel like their hospital was put in the middle of the CTC, in the middle of an industrial area, versus thoughtful medical industrial design being put around the hospital. Does that make sense, the difference in that viewpoint?
Yeah, totally get it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we can go back and think about it and work with staff. Work with staff to look at that corner. And our enhanced, like, our enhanced design, I will tell you, is probably 15% more than normal, a normal build, 20% more than a normal build. We're there, but we will continue to look at that. And I don't think that there's any, there's, I would tell you, I don't know that there's an absolute guarantee that it's three buildings side by side. There could be one larger one, two split up here.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, we've been talking to a group that would end up taking the whole site and they'd flip the building.
Interesting.
We would always try and push towards this.
For the, yeah, like, bringing everything in, right? Yeah, right, that's, I think you guys had mentioned that.
Kind of like clustering, what we've talked about in our presentations.
Absolutely, and that's what I was hoping for. So I appreciate you, thank you for listening and being thoughtful with this. Again, super excited, but also just really wanna see that very cool Sterling Bay designs that we've seen in the past demonstrate to us. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, yes. I also think that this is gonna be a wonderful addition to the city. I am 100% in favor of any kind of industrial businesses coming to town. My question is, on PUD 1, going off of Counselor Kern's comments, what if you were to shift those buildings, just turn them so that from the hospital, you're just seeing the narrow side of the building instead of the full length of it? And then you could put, you know, shrubs or trees or something that would block a lot of the view from the hospital of the buildings themselves. They'll still look down on a parking lot between the buildings, but they'll only see the little ends.
Yeah. We have, oh, sorry, go.
We've had that done before, and I think even our predecessors, Brubachal, have done that. I think with our, the way that the weather is out here, so it's like the freeze thaw thing that happens from on the north side of the buildings. So if you have any of your shipping and receiving, like, the front of the buildings, I think it impacts kind of like your ESG and like your energy production. And also, I just don't think it's good to have the actual, like, delivery sections on the north side of there.
Okay, what about then just using all of those trees that you're required to plant and planting them in between?
That's exactly what we're working on. We have our own landscape architect who presented it at council meeting that was kind of showing our whole plan. So yeah, we're strategically doing all that. But again, we don't have those in for PUD right now. Again, someone can come in, and Lockheed Martin wants a 500,000 square foot facility or something, right? And then we can come in with a different building, right? Or a different, like, layout, I guess. So the only one we're in for PUD in right now are those bottom two and then PUD 5.
Okay, thank you.
And next time we can go back, we can show a better detail of the landscape plan in this area, since it's a concern, because you can't really see that.
Councilmember Hamilton, then Councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you, I'll be brief since we're past my bedtime. In general, when I look at this, you know, I think there is enthusiasm in our community to attract the sort of tech that we've discussed tonight, whether it's aerospace, bio, life sciences. And if we need to consider what the building needs are of that community and how it might be different from what we originally set out with in this plan, I'm open to having that conversation. You know, I do have some concerns similar to some of my other council members regarding PUD number 2. And I'm not gonna get in the details, but I'm just saying, concerns around the fact that it's visible from campus drive. We have some residents as well that are on the other side of campus drive, so keeping that in mind is hopefully maybe you can continue the discussions with staff about industrial plus or what you've all called enhanced. I like the direction that's going. And I think what I would need to feel comfortable with it is that it's written out, and we all agree what that is. So if someone else acquires the land, they also have to abide by those rules. And it's not simply just, you know, a shake of the hand, this is what we showed you on a slide of what we commit to type of thing, right? So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Your last two slides with those small font charts.
There's just a lot to put in there.
It's fine, sorry. So just to get a slightly better sense for what you're attempting to demonstrate, so you're basically, you're saying, we have these architectural ideas. Which ones are consistent with the commercial? Which ones are consistent with the industrial? Is that?
Yeah, there's, if you went, if you pulled open both of these standards, there's section 4.2, sorry, 4.0, 4.0, and all of these sections are listed in there. All of these separate items, and I list them by A, B, C, D, or 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever they were shown. Some of them are exactly the same between some of the codes. Some of them are slightly different. And so we just tried to measure where we're really at. And have we, is there something that's, we're significantly not hitting? Or are we going above and beyond the industrial code? And we just wanted to get a full, you know, factual snapshot.
So I guess, Josh, if it's a, like, a green, that means our current design, we feel matches the commercial design guideline.
This one.
And if it's red, yeah. If it's red, that means it doesn't. But there's specific ones, like he was saying, like the roof, and then kind of like just a box structure. Box-like structures, like, the main two.
Yeah, so I guess my suggestion or thought was, you know, could we, could we use these two slides as sort of a basis for how to build a industrial-enhanced set of guidelines?
There are, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
There are, there are loosely-based terms in here as it is. I think the articulation, building articulation is not defined. And that's what we've probably had the hardest time trying to land. Is this acceptable? Is this acceptable? You know, if it's at a certain number of feet and articulation's in here, we could measure that. But there are, there are items within these two guidelines that are not measurable. I think they're left as guidelines on purpose, right? So.
I just wanted to add a little bit of staff perspective on that, too. So I think that, you know, these fairly old standards, you know, they're not all measurable. Those could, that could be a really good thing when you're doing design review, and it could also be really frustrating, right? Like, we all know what a, like, I'm saying this a little, it's not exactly like this, but we all know what a commercial building looks like, we all know what an industrial building looks like. These, in general, right, with a lot of nuance, these guidelines are supposed to kind of articulate that. And some of them are standards have to be met. Some of them are guidelines, they're aspirational. So it's not that black and white, I think, when you're applying these. And when staff's applying standards and guidelines, we're saying, okay, the standards have to be met. The guidelines, we want you to meet unless there's a really good reason not to meet them. So just to be clear, we do not require pitched roofs in the commercial design standards. That's just one option. It's kind of a really, like, upper end of the enhanced design that is not required in the commercial design standards. You can absolutely do flat roofs and meet the commercial design standards, just for clarification, too. So I think if you all, if there's kind of some council consensus around wanting to draft a hybrid approach, I would recommend that, you know, that we go back and work with the applicant on what's the most meaningful based on kind of the discussion about where is it most important? And, you know, you could look at what they're proposing, and you can come up with measurable standards, I think, to replicate or mimic what they're doing. And we can come back for further deliberation with an actual GDP amendment.
Okay, I just, you know, generally speaking, I agree with what my fellow council members have said. I would just add one thing, which is, you know, I know that there are a lot of trail connections and such planned already. I would just want to ensure that, you know, for people who are working there and are moving between buildings, for instance, that, you know, they also have good connections as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Other council members' comments? I'll sort of state my own thoughts about it and then try to sum up what I think I've heard. First, I appreciate your coming to us. This is a new, this is probably the big, I mean, it's the biggest project we've had come forward as a, or the biggest, yeah, project that we've come forward for a sketch plan. And we appreciate your willingness to get the input. And you've heard a lot of good input tonight. I do think we get, you know, we stumble over our codes. There's just, some of them are just so prescriptive, but not prescriptive enough at times. And I've seen, I don't think this is the council that would do this, but I have seen those ambiguities kill projects because of the way that council members responded to them. I've seen that in the past. And I recognize, you know, just acknowledge and put that out there because I know that that has to be a concern for anybody trying to build anything, is that you, you know, you try to do your best at meeting the guidelines, and then you get to council and, you know. And I'm trying to avoid that. I don't think that's, that's not the council we have anymore. But I, it's one of those things where certainty, I think, is a value that we're trying to put more stock in. So I think what, whatever, you know, whatever consensus we have here, I think that's something we're trying to do for you. So you don't, you aren't confused. And we don't, you know, look a gift horse in the mouth. I mean, we've, what I, I don't look at this discussion as anything like a bait and switch. I think it is an attempt to try to accommodate concerns, aesthetic concerns, and market reality. And what we're hearing from you, in part, I'm not suggesting that we're not hearing aesthetic concerns coming from you. I know you are concerned with that. But that, you know, we can price ourselves out of this by the standards that we use. And so I think all of us knows, you know, all of us here know how serious that is. And we don't want a project that because of our standards ends up being, you know, something that can't ever be built because of something that we've done unless we really care a whole lot about it. And sort of to go, you know, I'm not as concerned, I think, about whether industrial design guidelines apply here. But I, that is not, I don't think that is similar to my fellow council members. And I think what I'm hearing for council is an interest in doing a kind of industrial plus or maybe, I don't know, I'd say commercial negative. But, you know, that's probably not a good way of thinking about it. But, I mean, it's sort of a mid-level to make sure that these buildings look nice to the residents that are, or the passersby, or the ambulances, or whatever is coming through the area. And that's, I think that's something that you've heard from most of us here. And, you know, I mean, we're hopeful And, you know, I mean, we're hopeful that you're going to be able to have the flexibility, you know, from the business side of this to be able to bring in the kinds of industry interest that Mayor Protem articulated very well. So basically, what we want is, we want it all.
Yep.
And we want it now, and we want it cheap for you, but really beautiful for us.
Yes.
Right? Because that's, you know, that's always the best. And we know that there's going to be some accommodation in there, so. But I hope that, you know, if I've articulated the consensus, that is something that is, and we're not worried about you, this is, you know, I mean, not that it matters, because our feelings toward you don't really matter. It's that this is going to run with the land, so we need to be real careful. This is our one shot to make these kinds of rules. So something that looks a bit like what you've presented in some of these, but these renderings, but a lot more care, or a little bit more care than the industrial guidelines require on articulation, interest, and aesthetically attractive exteriors. Have I got that right? Are there other things that? Yeah.
Yeah, I think we get it. This, honestly, this concept plan review has been awesome, too. So I appreciate you allowing us to do this.
I mean, it's hard, but the nice thing about this is we can, you know, we're, I think you're hearing some discontent with the rules that we have amongst us, right? And because we're trying to work with you on this, and this is, and you can't rely on anything we've said tonight, you know?
Yeah.
But, I mean, no, honestly, that's part of it. Except, except, I'm being legally correct, but I do, but I also, and it's, you know, 10:14. But I'm also, I think what we can do is to be, you know, we can share some candor with you and have that back and forth, which is, for business people, even getting that, I know, is much better than praying for the black box of council's final decision to come out magically right. And so I'm pleased with this process, and I hope, I hope.
We are, we, yeah, we have some pursuits going on right now. We had to fill out the situation because it was, so we really appreciate this venue. I will say, no matter, I think no matter what happens, even if it wasn't us on the site, this problem will continue. The fact that these permitted uses are listed and then it's tied to the commercial design standards, I don't think this will ever go away because I think people want to come in here and do industrial buildings, and it's never going to pencil when those two are mixed together right now. If it were direct industrial versus commercial design, I don't think there would be any confusion between us, and we still bring in enhanced, but I get, I get your position about future.
And that's, that's good feedback for us, too.
Will this information, because the detail, too, was great in this spreadsheet, the comparisons. Will that be available for us to take a look at? Will you be giving that to our staff?
We have it in Excel. We just had to, instead of five slides.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you can send it to.
Honestly, they should take a look at it because it was our opinion, and they can give you their opinion on it as well.
Thank you.
That's fair.
That's great.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Anything more from staff? I mean, I realize that you're not going to give your full evaluation and that you haven't tonight, but if you've got thoughts about this.
Yeah, I think this was really helpful. I think that, you know, Sterling Bay can, this is helpful for them to decide how to proceed. Certainly, they've got options. They could choose to proceed with the GDP amendment to, and use this input to inform that GDP amendment. It helps inform staff. Certainly, they could come back for another concept plan review if they wanted to vet ideas. I don't, you know, that's, there's always timing issues with that. But, so I think this is a helpful first step, regardless of whether it, you know, comes back as a GDP or more vetting through concept plan. Those are all options.
And I've been taking some notes of some ideas of measurable standards based on some of the feedback that you've all provided that we may be able to apply and work with the applicants on and see if we can find a, find a solution there.
Last question. Are you more encouraged or are you less encouraged by this? Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, it was the body language I was looking for.
Yeah, definitely more encouraged.
Yeah, I'm delirious as well.
We took the first flight out of here this morning, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all of your input. All right. We're at the point of city attorney's report. Does the city attorney have a report?
And I have none, thank you.
Okay. Identification of future agenda items. You want to?
Just wanted to float one idea. So with recent federal cuts to social services and the federal government being shut down at the moment, I am wondering if the city is interested in doing any kind of special contribution to organizations like Community Food Share, or Sister Carmen, or All Roads outside of what we usually do on a two-year basis?
And your thought on that was putting that on the agenda to be able to potentially get in under the wire for the budget finalization? Is that the idea?
Maybe, yeah.
Any thoughts about whether that is an item you'd like to put on the agenda? Yeah, Councilmember Fay.
Yes, that sounds like a good item to put on the agenda quickly before the budget gets settled.
Councilmember Kern.
Honestly, I think that this might be appropriate to come to the finance committee, if at all. I think that those two specific organizations, they do keep really good track of what the needs are. And we should find out if there's actually an uptick right now in reported. That may actually not be the case.
Is there a finance committee meeting between now and when the budget has to be finalized? There's not. Yeah, it may have to come back to us if it does at all. Can staff, I mean, is that a thumbs up that we consider it? So maybe throw it to staff to make a suggestion? Do you have any, yeah, go ahead.
So I appreciate you bringing this to the table for conversation. And certainly, we live in unusual times and quite possibly the longest shutdown. I think something like this, similar to other items where we're like, oh, we need to develop a policy about this or some sort of, you know, guidelines, because when do you do or not do it? And how much? And what about the budget? So I conceptually am interested in talking about it, but I just am not certain how it fits in with our current budget and plans. And like, there's no policy around how you do or do not move with these things. That's about as eloquent as I get at 10:21 at night.
It is, and I don't want to get too much into the, I mean, we're really talking more about process in some ways and substance. It doesn't sound like anybody is sort of like, no, we don't want to consider this at all. It's a kind of when and how and why sort of thing. Maybe another way of thinking about it might be to deal with the budget as the budget and then come back after that's done and decide if there's a budget amendment to be had or some budget reallocation after we've passed the budget. I guess I'd look toward the city manager about that.
I would need direction in terms of specific organizations, because where does it end? There's a lot of different nonprofits that are supporting the community. And so if we were to undertake this evaluation of needs, I would, I would need specific direction from council as to which organizations you want to reach out to, because I think that we could develop a very long list. And the, in terms of city funding and the ability to support, you know, recognizing that we also cut our budget going into next year, this is a, I really appreciate the thought, but it is a much larger discussion that needs to be considered.
And, well, and a larger discussion, if that's indeed what is necessary, and I don't disagree with that. One, we're not going to have it tonight, but two, more importantly, it's not on the agenda to have it tonight. Perhaps that counts for maybe waiting on, putting on it on a specific agenda, but holding it as something we may want to consider in, as part of a larger discussion. Fair enough. Thumbs up.
I would also like to note that November 10th is the next thing that we will actually have the upcoming agenda items and identification of new ones discussion. So that would be another opportunity to review this topic.
I was just going to say, too, maybe this is something that falls under, like, you know, our reevaluation of just our charity donation process? And is there some sort of emergency component to it that we haven't considered before? So I think rather than putting it on anything, you know, right now on council's work plan, it might be, maybe we can wrap it under that in the future when we look at that process.
Yeah, I like the idea of it being something around an emergency process, so it applies to lots of situations that come up in the future.
Or the few situations that constitute an emergency, right? One thing I would say on that is that we have, there's certainly precedent during the pandemic. We bumped up some charitable giving during that time as a result of what we knew were big needs. And I think we also, there was a cliff that, that occurred on Medicaid that left a lot of people in the lurch, and I want to say it was a year and a half ago or something like that. And that's another instance where I think we may have made a change, so. But, all right, I think that, that's a good discussion about a potential agenda item. You have another one? Go ahead.
I just want to confirm that we are going to have an agenda item regarding the airport and how we want to deal with going forward with promoting a good relationship.
I think that is kind of going to be something to consider after the task force does one last look at a strategy and suggestions.
Yeah, my, I think the interesting that Dietrich and I took away with is we're going to create a list from everything that we heard from you guys and then come back with, like, a discussion point that we can all decide what the next step is, whether that's new members to the task force or however we want to address that.
Do we have a motion?
Do adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Recording stopped.